Please stand for the pledge allegiance and then remain standing. Thank you.
The great city that it is. Lord, we know without you, love doesn't exist. So I'm just praying that we learn to grow together, learn to love each other, and then also do our parts across the board, Lord, to make this place the best place that it is. We give you glory for it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Uribe?
Here.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Here.
Councilmember Cal?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fosse?
Here.
Mayor Hernandez?
Here.
There can be no agenda changes in any council three members staff whose direct conflict of interest on a scheduled agenda item to be considered stated or their conflict at this time. Seeing none, we have no presentation, so public comment.
Mayor Vicki Holt?
Good evening, council members and Mayor Hernandez. My name is Vicki Holt, and I'm the branch manager at the Riverbank Library, and I want to let you know about some of the activities that we have at the library. Storytime continues until the end of March. It's every Tuesday at 11 o'clock and alternates between English and bilingual. Starting March 1st, In-N-Out sponsors a reading challenge at the library called Cover to Cover. When kids read five books or 300 minutes, they earn a certificate for a free hamburger or cheeseburger. So that goes until April 12th, so we encourage the kids to read. Celebrate Dr. Seuss's birthday with us next Tuesday, March 4th at 3:30 p.m. Staff will read favorite Dr. Seuss books, and then there's crafts and activities and a birthday cake following. And the friends of the library, friends of the Riverbank Library, provide the cake. The next Master Garden class, called The New Front Yard, is on Saturday, March 8th at 2 p.m. So if you're thinking about replacing all or part of your lawn, this class is for you. Learn tips on how to save water, convert to drip, and get a list of water-wise plants. Our book club meets the last Tuesday of the month, so that was today, but for March, March 25th at 4 p.m., we're going to be discussing the book The Lost and Found Bookshop by Susan Wiggs. So if you if you need an extra copy and want to read and come to our book club, we have a lot of fun. All the programs at the library are free to the public, and it's because of the 8th of Ascent's dedicated sales tax that these library services are available to the public. So come by and visit us.
Thank you. Ms. Karen Conrado? Cal, Cal, can you give us a minute? Ms. Conrado?
Gabby's gonna call everyone.
Oh, everybody.
Hi, my name is Karen Conrado. I live on Hog Road, and I'm here to talk about my opposition to the proposed project of Riverwalk. There you have new council members out, and welcome. It's good to see everyone, Mayor Hernandez and city council members. I've spoken many times to the city council about the poor location choice concerning the proposed Riverwalk project. I and other members of the community have spoken frequently about the flaws in this plan. The facts continue to be valid that we have presented, and I want to run past them. You've heard them before, but you're new, and I would like to, and I know you're researching the merits of this plan, this project. Number one for me is that it's prime ag land. It's world-class quality land, and every farmer in the area knows that. It's a designated prime land. It's floodplain land that has flooded in the past and has flooded since New Maloney's has been there. We talk about water depletion with the wells, the river, the aqueduct, the aquifer, excuse me. There's wildlife concerns, wildlife corridor, river habitat, where there's concerns with sewer, garbage, water, traffic, piping sewage under the Stanislaus River, white water, air, light pollution, urban sprawl, leapfrogging, all things that are important to the state and to us. Residents that have moved to Riverbank to raise their children in a quiet country lifestyle that are upset that all the growth they're seeing. Many more, many more reasons not to okay this project. I know it hasn't come in front of you, but I know there's a lot of material to cover. Thank you.
Thank you. Olivia?
Evening, Mayor Hernandez, council members, and everyone here who's attending. My name's Olivia Rambla. I am broker and owner of Timeless Real Estate here in Riverbank, but I am also your Chamber of Commerce for Riverbank, your Director of Community Events. So I am here on behalf of Chamber this time to share some different events that we have coming up. I'm just going to start with the big one. If you have not received this flyer, there's some on the back of the room. It is the Riverbank Community Easter egg hunt and vendor fair. That's going to take place on April 19th from 10 a.m. to 3 p.m. The Easter egg hunt is free, and there's different age group times for the kids to come out and get their Easter egg hunts. Also, there are sponsorship opportunities as well if you'd like to sponsor, but we're looking still for vendors, food trucks, and of course, tons of kids to come out and get their Easter eggs during their hunt. So it's a very good event, free to the family, so come on out for that. We also have a few other events coming up. We have sorry, friends. We have coming up ribbon cutting. The ribbon cutting that we have is the next one is in April. It's going to be on the 4th. It's going to be ENJ Industry from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. It's going to be a combo ribbon cutting with the Stanislaus Latino Chamber, and that's going to take place again, 5:30 to 7:30 is proposed time right now on April 4th. So make sure you guys plan for that because you guys want that's coming up soon. And since I want to start in April and kind of go backwards today, unfortunately, we do have some different events coming up in March. We have a lunch and learn, which is going to be something, a lunch to learn on planning for your afterlife planning. That's going to be on April 13th from 12 to 1. Tentatively, that's going to be held at the Round Table Pizza in the Crossroad Shopping Center from 12 to 1. Also, we have an AI technology usage for businesses. That's going to be one of our workshops. That's going to be held on March 19th from 5:30 to 7:00, and that's going to be tentative date on that one. I'm confirming the place for that, the location with the person who's teaching the class. And then we also have a Riverbank Chamber of Commerce installation on March 21st. For that, we're going to have just getting to know your new chamber members, ambassadors. There's a lot of people there. It's going to be held at Perco's from 6 p.m. to 8 p.m. So all are welcome to come and see all the people who've been helping to try to make the community a better place, especially for our businesses. And then on March 4th, if you're an ambassador, we have ambassador training. It's going to be held at the industrial complex from 12 to 1. And we have meetings every second and fourth Tuesday of the month at the industrial complex from 12 to 1. So just come on out and visit us. If you have any questions, please just let me know. Thank you.
Members and mayor, my name is Cal Campbell. I live in Riverbank for 40 years at 2318 River Gate Drive. Currently, I am president of the Riverbank Sisters Cities Committee, which is a brand-new committee that we've worked very hard to get together over the years.
Please stand for the pledge allegiance and then remain standing. Thank you.
I'm down here this evening to thank the city workers that are in Maricello's department to help us do something that we worked very hard in the last three months to get together. We have a student that we are sending to the International Cities Committee for Washington, D.C. She's filled out her application. Her name is Chantel Andalon. She's a high school, Riverbank City High School senior student. It's very well-known down there. She is going to be competing with a lot of people to be able to send. They only choose 50 from the international site. But the nice thing is that in the last three months, this committee that I've worked with got the funds together, along with the help of the city and a lot of along with a lot of hard work from the workers to get enough money to send this student to there, and it won't cost the city a penny. Thank you very much, and I'm glad to be able to be here.
We have one on Zoom, mayor. Norma Canes comes on mute.
Hello?
Go ahead, Ms. Agers.
Thank you. Janie Agers. I live at 7730 McHenry Avenue, Modesto, outside the city of Riverbank, but within the proposed Riverwalk project area. Mayor Hernandez and Councilmember Uribe have heard me speak many times over the past three and a half years since the Riverwalk proposed project became known to the public, but I haven't yet spoken before the new council members. So that's the reason for my comments this evening. I consider myself to be a champion of saving prime ag land. The ag land within this proposed project area is not only some of the best in the county, but probably the state. I'm an advocate of maintaining ag buffers between communities, and I'm an advocate of maintaining this area's agricultural heritage. My understanding is the project will come before you sometime in the next few months, and I want to encourage you to vote no. Thank you.
That is all we have, mayor.
Okay, so consent calendar. Item 9.1, waive readings. All readings of ordinance and resolutions except by title are waived. And that is it on the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Cal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fosse?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Public hearings, item 10.1, a resolution approving the fiscal year 2425 midyear budget amendments.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tamiel Cantor, your Assistant City Manager, will be providing the report on this item.
Good evening, everyone, mayor, council. Tonight, as stated, I will be presenting to you our midyear budget review. Yeah, there we go. So tonight, we're here for our midyear budget review. This provides an opportunity to revisit our projections made for the annual operating budget adopted in June of 2024. We can make any adjustments based on new information, emergency needs, and/or revenue and expenditure trends. Provides departments with an opportunity to request a new appropriation for emergency projects' equipment that require immediate attention. So here's just a graph of our revenue growth, and you will see that there is a slight decline for the 2425 year. And part of this decline is due to we changed how we were allocating our salaries. We used to allocate a lot of salaries into the general fund, and we would receive transfer-ins from the other funds. So we are seeing less transfer-ins in our revenue, which is showing the decline. For the midyear, we are recommending to increase our revenues by 482,000. A large chunk of that is the property tax revenues. We've seen an increase in that, an increase in our business license revenue trends, and police services Um, an increase in our business license revenue trends and police services. On police services is for our SRO contract with the school district. Um, that wasn't, revenue wasn't put in there, um, with the original budget. Um, and then we've seen an increase in our plan check fees and interest income. Um, you, if you look at the detailed, uh, information that was in the staff report, you will see in several funds that there is, uh, interest income is being increased. And some of these increases are due to, um, us having brought on our investment advisor consultant and helping us with, um, investing our monies appropriately. So our expenditures, um, again, here you see a slight decline in, uh, expenditures. Again, based, some of that is based on the change in how we're allocating salaries, so there's less going into the general fund there. So we do have a few, um, mid-year, uh, adjustments. They're being increased by a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars. Some of those are corrections to personnel costs, um, engineering costs, um, and then an increase to, uh, the recreation programs, a subsidy from the general fund was needed of twenty-two thousand. So this graph just shows you, um, overall where we had originally projected our beginning reserve, our estimated revenues, expenditures, and ending reserve with the general fund. Um, the green is the original budget, the blue is the mid-year. Um, you will see the ending reserve budget has grown quite a bit there. We did, um, true up our beginning balances with the end of the fiscal year, so there was a large increase in that beginning fund reserve. It was, uh, one point three million. That, it was adjusted. So here's a summary of your general fund. Your beginning reserve was amended to eight point three. Our amended revenues are at thirteen point six and expenditures at fourteen point four, leaving us with an estimated ending reserve for June of twenty-five at seven point five million. Um, this does show a structural deficit of eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Um, and as noted, the ending, or I wasn't noted, but the ending reserve balance was originally six point one, and now we're at the seven point five. So things to consider for our future budgets and the general fund, continued property tax increases as, as a result of our new development, increase in sales tax with the development of the Crossroads West Commercial Center. Um, we will continue to evaluate our department staffing, um, our cowper's unfunded liability, um, capital needs that may have no other funding sources, um, that could affect the general fund, and then funding for operation and maintenance effort, um, of our gas tax. And that, as gas tax, uh, revenues continue to decline, we see an increase in our general fund subsidy to maintain our streets and roads. And here is our gas tax for the mid-year budget. Um, there were minor changes. We actually had a reduction of eleven thousand to our SB one funds. We use that, the state provides, uh, estimated revenues. Um, there were some changes in expenditures, some personnel projection corrections, um, increased street sweeping and utility costs. We have been notified by Jolton that they will no longer be handling street sweeping, so there could be some additional charges, um, once we determine how we're gonna move forward with that as well. And I'm sorry. So our, uh, Indian reserve balance on this is twenty thousand, um, one hundred and fifty-one dollars. Sewer analysis, um, so in the sewer, revenues were increased based on current trends. Um, in expenditures, we did have some increases for, uh, generator maintenance, biolock diffusers, and a case STX tractor maintenance. Um, and an increase, uh, for some levy reinforcement out at our ponds. Um, expenses are also being increased, um, to move some playground equipment in Pioneer Park due to the location of water and sewer lines. This is being split between the water and sewer. Um, and I would note that in our original budget, um, the expenditures were lower, and after the budget was adopted, there was some additional appropriations, um, that were made, um, for the recycled water project to get it to a sixty percent, um, design. So for our water fund, um, there were slight increases in revenues based on the current revenue trends. Expenditures increased in overtime and generator maintenance, utility costs, state fees, and some uniform costs. Um, there were some adjustments in personnel costs that netted to a decrease of expenditures. Um, expenses are also being increased. Again, the, uh, the move of the Pioneer Playground Equipment is being split between the water and sewer. And just another note on there, this fund has continued to run, um, with a deficit, so, uh, staff will be looking at preparing for a future rate study in this, in the water. The last time we raised those rates were in two thousand nineteen. So our public benefit fund analysis, um, we originally had, uh, with the adopted budget, the reserve balance was nine hundred and fifty-four thousand, but with the amended, uh, we are projecting a nine hundred and thirty-five thousand ending reserve balance. Um, and I would like to make a note that in the staff report, it was indicated that there were three current development agreements, and there were actually four. Um, and it also noted that there were only two cannabis-related businesses operating, and again, there are four. So we have four agreements with four operating. So our fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget prepar-, uh, preparation will begin here shortly. Major expenditures to include, um, continue to evaluate staffing needs, increasing costs and supplies and services, deferred maintenance on city buildings and infrastructure, and evaluation of our equipment needs. And tonight, it is recommended that the city council consider the following action, which would be approve the mid-year budget amendments as presented. And I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any council comments or questions?
Uh, Tammy, if you could back up to the, to the water fund. Um, it's, actually, if you can back up to the cowper's life first, and then I'll have you jump forward to the water fund. So for the cowper's, uh, liability item two, what's the update for that trust one fifteen fund that we've kind of been working on?
So we talked about that, and, um, there was some, that I held back on it for this year because we had enlisted the assistance of the investment advisor. So we still have, um, earmarked monies for that, but we are allowing the investment advisor to assist us and invest some of those funds right now.
Makes sense. Okay. And then if you can jump forward to the waterfront analysis, you, so you're seeing line one and then line four there. So you're seeing a pretty huge decrease there. And if, so if we're projecting out a year from here, um, our water fund will have almost nothing in it, right? If, if the trend continues, right?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. So that is obviously an area of concern and why the study is being brought forward. Okay.
And I'm just gonna make a comment on the gas tax. So as, um, it is part of Stan Cog, we're, um, assessing how the gas tax is gonna continue to decrease. Does impacting our, uh, budget? Um, so there are a couple options that the state is looking at, uh, to replace that gas tax. And, um, I would love to talk to any community members about the propositions. Uh, the San Slough County is moving forward with a, um, uh, a different, uh, veh- vehicle registration fee as opposed to miles traveled, uh, to supplement or to replace this. Um, the, the goal is, at the end of the day, for the city's budget not to be impacted. And so, um, there's a lot of work going on around that as well.
I would just note, like, because of the increase in the electric vehicles, that's where we're seeing a lot of our gas tax, um, revenue declining, as you state, that both local and state levels, it's being evaluated of how to move forward. Yeah.
Are there any, uh, public comments or questions? Or it's a public hearing, so I will officially open for a public hearing if there's any comments or questions.
Yes, you can come up to the podium.
As the Costco, uh, which is a massive amount of, uh, because I would think that between these little gas stations that's in Riverbank, that's been there for many, many years, is so much different than the Costco, which is a massive amount of, uh, but I would think, plus the sales tax they generate, oh, uh, would be over an abundance of the, uh, of anything else on that, on, like Costco, it's such a huge, uh, service. And, oh, I'm Darryl Daniel with three, four, four, two hatches in the street of Riverbank.
Mayor, we have one on Zoom. Number ending in three, one, zero, eight. Can you please unmute? Phone number ending in three, one, zero, eight. Can you please unmute?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I just have a question on the public benefit fund. It says that there's only, that there are, uh, three, only three cannabis businesses, and only two are operating. But we actually have four, and to my knowledge, they're all operating. I just wanted you to clarify that. Because there's Glavers, there's two downtown, the Henry and Third Street, and there's Terminal.
Is that all your comment?
That's it, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so to respond to that question, uh, we did clarify, Tammy did clarify during her report that the, we do have four active development agreements and four active, um, sites that are, are currently participating in that.
Any other public comments?
Evening, Darlene Barbara Martinez, City of Riverbank. Um, you mentioned that there were some services that Gilton has decided not to continue. So are we planning as a city to expand and get someone else to, um, cover those services? And that will affect the budget, but I was just curious, are we going to try to cover that in some other way? Thanks.
Yes, so Jilton had notified us that they are getting out of the street sweeping business. We have put out a RFP, and we are talking with other jurisdictions that are being impacted by this as well to see if there's a combination that we can do of working with the other agencies, um, without a large increase to our budget. So we are working on it. And Jilton is, um, very cooperative and working with us while we work through this process to see which what direction we're gonna go.
Which would also impact the gas tax fund, correct? And continue to subsidize it even higher?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
There will be an item coming forward. Um, any other public comments or questions? All right. Closing the public hearing, uh, if there's no further comments or questions, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve item ten point one?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Col?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fossey?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item ten-two, resolution to consider approval of the request for an exception to allow for flag lot configuration of us the tentative parcel map one oh one, twenty twenty-three located at thirty-eight thirteen Sierra Street.
Your Community Development Director, Joshua Mann, will provide the report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Um, tonight, we have an exception request, tentative parcel map number zero one, twenty twenty-three, titled the Schaefer parcel map. Just a little background on the location. Um, the site itself, its physical address is thirty-eight eighteen Sierra Street. Property is approximately a little bit less than a half acre, around twenty thousand square feet. Um, current general plan designation is medium-density residential with our single-family R1 zoning as its zoning designation. The applicants, the Schaefer family, are seeking, um, to subdivide the existing twenty thousand square foot parcel to allow a one parcel and one remainder. The property itself is a little bit of an odd shape, so here's an air photo that's, uh, showing the property outlined in red. Just take note how the Sierra Street frontage is where the existing house is, and then to the south is Front Street, which is the dead-end street currently. And this property extends right down, um, into Front Street. Um, here's the tentative parcel map. The, again, it's kind of an odd shape, and I've dr- outlined it in red. Then there's a dotted line kind of in the middle showing where the separation would be. Um, also, just take note on Front Street, the, um, entrance is about, I believe it's twenty feet wide, and this is part of the reason for the exception request, um, which I'll get into. Again, so there's the twenty-foot wide street frontage, which, um, would go onto Front Street. And then parcel A, which is where the existing home and, um, accessory buildings are, would pretty much remain as is. Um, in terms of why this parcel map needs an exception request is the remainder parcel, that odd-shaped parcel I was showing. Um, it has a current lot width of twenty feet where the, um, road frontage is on Front Street, and a lot depth of a hundred and eighty feet total. Uh, per the Riverbank Municipal Code, the, um, the code states that your road fringe cannot exceed the depth more than three times. So this is why we're here tonight. In terms of general plan consistency, the project, um, is pretty consistent with our general plan, but particularly, um, the conservation policy eight point six, which states the city will encourage compact development to achieve more efficient use of resources and provision of public facilities and services. Um, when we looked at this, um, staff's evaluation was the approval of this tentative map um, would lead to the development of a single-family dwelling on, uh, parcel B, which is the remainder. Um, and the flag lot makes it possible for development and sale of a residential dwelling unit for an additional family or other, um, interested buyer. In terms of environmental, SEQA, um, has a infill development exemption, so this project is considered, um, exempt from SEQA review. Um, in terms of public notice, um, staff placed a advertisement in the Riverbank News, and public notices were mailed to the surrounding property owners on Wednesday, February twelfth. Um, back in January, this, um, project went to the Planning Commission, January twenty-first. Um, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing. There were no comments in opposition. One resident spoke in favor of the project. Ultimately, the Planning Commission voted five zero to recommend the city council approve this request. Um, staff is recommending the city council consider adopting the resolution outlined in the staff report and approve the request for parcel map zero one dash twenty twenty-three and the exception request to allow for the flag lot configuration based on the findings outlined in the staff report. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council comments or questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so it is officially open. Are there any questions or comments from the public?
Come on up.
Anyway, I'd like to comment that on Front Street, uh, you're talking about bringing in, uh, homes and onto that empty property there, that there, back in behind Front Street. Okay, um, I don't know, we, this was discussed like many years ago. I've been a resident here for like seven, I'm telling my age, seventy-five years. And so I've seen a lot of growth here. But that part back there on that little small area that you're talking of roadway, there's no way that a fire department, if a fire breaks out, it takes them three pivots to get inside there, to get straightened up, to get in there. Someone, I'm afraid, that would burn up and, and be gone before they could get into there. Uh, and also too, we, the residents all around there, we already have slow water that comes through. Uh, I don't believe that there's been, um, plumbing, new pipes that went through in that area for quite some time. So this is just something that, that, that I'm aware of, and, and, uh, maybe you could answer that. So this is just something that, that, that I'm aware of, and, and maybe you could answer that.
Thank you.
If it, you know, a new plumbing coming through, how would the fire department get into there? Because I've watched them before. It takes three pivots to get in, to get straight. Okay, thank you very much.
Please.
So she brings up some great points. If I could bring back the map, I can kind of explain a few things here. In terms of the first question she had on access, I apologize. I mean, in terms of access, this project was referred to the Fire District. Fire District, that was also some of our planning staff's early concerns about, you know, kind of the long driveway, whether or not fire could adequately service this if there was an emergency. So we did have the Fire District look at that. Ultimately, it wasn't deemed a concern by the Fire District. The other thing to consider is that any home that's built now, new homes are required to have fire sprinklers. So again, with that and the Fire District having no concerns, planning staff, we really didn't have any issues with this. I believe her, her other question on the utilities, so this project will be required to extend the water lines on Front Street, sewer as well. And so all that will be reviewed by our city engineer, and improvement plans will be created to properly extend those services. I don't believe it would impact any of the additional surrounding properties. It may in fact extend the sewer line to open up additional opportunities for development to the east of this property, if anything.
Any other public comments or questions? Any online? Okay, I will close this public hearing, and if there's no further comments or questions from council, is there a motion?
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve item ten point two.
My second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Odivin?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fossey?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero.
Thank you, Josh. Item eleven point one, resolution adopting city council rules and procedures handbook.
Mayor and council, this is an item that the city attorney, the city clerk, and myself have been working on for quite some time. We've made some jokes earlier that this is going to be your guidebook, your bible, that you'll be able to refer to with regards to not only the operations of the city, but also how you communicate with each other and with your residents. So tonight, we have Nubia Goldstein from White Brenner, who is our legal attorneys, to provide this report.
Thank you, Maricela, and good evening, mayor and council members. Before you tonight is the handbook. Want to refer it otherwise as the Riverbank Council Bible, that would be fine, too. We do have a presentation to go over the, the general overview of the different chapters that are contained in it. The idea will be to walk through those and answer any questions that you may have. And then towards the end, try to focus it more towards the specific, any specific questions or specific portions of the draft handbook that you would like to further discuss or potentially make changes to. So structurally, the handbook is really predicated on several things, and we'll go through this through the presentation. There are many portions of it that reflect state law. And those things are not necessarily ones that we can change as part of this process, but there are some things that are within the council's purview that you may want to change. And as Maricela mentioned, this really is the, the structural document that will help guide the council in establishing your own rules for conducting business on behalf of the residents. So with that, let's go ahead and get started. As I mentioned, general overview, we're going to discuss the handbook and then potential revisions as the council may want. So again, I won't touch too much on this, but again, the idea behind the handbook is it really establishes your guide for processes and governance on behalf of the residents. So let's go ahead and dive in into the actual document itself. Chapter one provides an overview of powers and duties that the council has as vested under the municipal code and state law. Again, from a organizational standpoint, we have the mayor serving as the official head for purposes of presiding over meetings, signing all official documents on behalf of the city, and appointing the vice mayor with approval from the council. As stated before, the council determines procedures for meetings, and you may amend them as you deem necessary. From a council, a city council, city manager governance standpoint, your city manager implements policies and programs that are initiated by the council. And the concept behind this idea is that the council serves as the overarching body, the legislative body that oversees two positions, your city manager and your city attorney. Those are the two positions that work the most close to the council with the remainder of your staff underneath the city manager. City manager oversees the day-to-day operations and administration and carrying out the council's wishes. Your city attorney represents the city in all legal matters and will advise the council on, on any pending issues and rulings and legislation or other items as identified by the council. Chapter one also contains conflict of interest provisions. This is really within the purview of the government code and as overseen by the Fair Political Practices Commission. So there's, again, this is one of those areas where there's not a lot of wiggle room for purposes of the handbook, but we wanted to ensure that you had a handy reference, that you could look at if you have any questions. As we like to tell you when we, when we go through our ethics training or other ethic trainings that you take, that if there are any specific questions about potential conflict of interest issues or disclosures that are necessary, consult your city attorney's office with as much time as, as permitted under the circumstances so that we may be able to advise you as things, as things come out. There have been changes in the last few years specifically related to campaign contribution disclosures and potential conflicts, disqualifying conflicts of interest. So again, those things are dynamic, and we're here to answer any questions you have, but please feel free to reach out to us. Your ethical requirements, as required under the government code, are memorialized in your handbook. But generally speaking, the idea behind this is that there needs to be transparency in all of your transactions on behalf of the community. All of that's included in your handbook as a reminder. And the, I think one of the, the major touchstones for this is the idea that in your official capacity and your position on behalf of the city is to act in, in a even manner that is not designed to obtain some type of personal advantage, but to use your position on behalf of the public generally. Chapter two, these are the rules for the meetings. This is really encapsulating the requirements under the Brown Act. Part of your ethics training does require Brown Act refreshers, as council probably has had those in the last two, you have to do it every two years. Again, the general overview is the Brown Act requires that your meetings be open and public and allow members of the public to participate in all actions that the city council takes. And there are provisions for workshop or ad hoc committees, and all of that is established in your handbook. So generally speaking, the process by which you appoint ad hoc committees or committees in general are more within the council's purview of process, how you want to make appointments, make recommendations, how you want to constitute these committees, if, if at all. So that is all within your ability to make changes structurally and how you want those to look like in your handbook. Further requirements, detailed, the voting requirements. Generally speaking, you take action on resolutions and ordinances. There's very specific provisions under law that allow specific types of ordinances to take place, such as urgency ordinances require more than just your minimum quorum. And again, the intent behind the handbook is to give you a handy reference of where to look in case there's any questions. The good thing is, and probably a good point to make now, is that you're not expected to know this handbook front to back, right? It's, again, it's a handy reference, but that's why we have legal counsel attending your meetings, who works with the city manager to address any issues that may come up before the meeting. So again, don't, don't feel that you need to know these rules back and forth. But again, these are, it's a, it's a working document that, that you can refer to whenever you need to. Chapter three pertains to the rules for decorum. The idea behind the decorum chapter is to establish those rules that you will follow in your official capacity at these meetings as a city representative and to encourage courteous and respectful behavior to each other and to the public during public meetings. The, the, the role of the council in and, in and of itself is really, how do you help police each other? Because that's essentially one of the, the responsibilities that you have is to ensure that each of you, in your official capacity on the dais, are communicating with each other in a courteous manner and in order to have the flow of the meeting move forward productively. So this chapter lays out some of those parameters. With, from a general standpoint, the idea is that the mayor is responsible, as the chairperson for the meeting, the mayor is responsible for maintaining decorum during public hearings. And there are provisions under state law that allow for the removal of disruptive individuals. There have been changes to state law in the last couple of years about what the requirements for that are. I mean, again, in, in the event, not likely to happen here, but there, there are certain things that need to happen. It's basically a step-by-step process by which you provide a warning, try to encourage the individual to focus their comments. But again, there are times where, under the circumstances, maybe members of the public start disrupting the meeting. So there are, there are rules by which the city can follow in order to essentially clear the room and, and basically start, you know, the, the meeting from a, from a better standpoint. So again, we have that part of your decorum chapter. And we do have a provision here about discouraging cell phone use, again, to try to make the meetings less disruptive. Smoking prohibited as part of your standard operating procedures here in City Hall. Chapter four oversees the procedures for meetings themselves. Again, the idea is conducting meetings in an orderly manner, having a process by which there's the chair, the chair who calls for public comment and directs staff to, to move forward in an orderly fashion. I like to describe this process as a orchestra. It's a well-coordinated orchestra to ensure that everyone knows where they fit into that and ensures that the public understands that there will be time for public comment, there will be time for staff to make their presentation, there will be time for the council to ask their questions as necessary. So this is all very much in line with your current practice. This handbook is not intended to completely change the process that you're, you're, you're already using. And that is something that we've worked with staff and with your city manager to ensure that the process does line up as much as possible with your current practice. Because this is the, I believe this is the first time we're looking at a formal memorialization of your process as part of the handbook. For purposes of formal hearings, and this more in the context of presentations that allow for rebuttal and a presentation, maybe for appeals, in the event that the city council has to sit as the hearing body for an appeal, we've established procedures on how the order will go. And so there's, there's time limits associated with this. There's also a line, as you see at the bottom of the presentation here, per, people speaking on non-agendised items, your current process is three minutes, which is in line with the majority of cities in California. It's actually been a, it's a hot topic for other cities that we represent lately on whether to change that or not. But three minutes is the average. And the rule generally behind public comment time limits are, as long as you are holding those timeframes consistently for all speakers, there are moments in time, depending on your agenda, if there are topics that might generate a significant amount of, of public input, where the council might feel it's necessary to limit it. So sometimes there'll be a need for, we want to make sure that everybody gets a chance to speak, so we're going to reduce the time limit, for example, maybe to two minutes under the circumstances. That is permitted, and your rules allow for that, as long as that is held to everyone. So this would be a decision that would typically happen at the beginning of your meeting before you actually take public comment.
So Nubia, just to confirm, so blocks of time before the item is presented is appropriate? So say we have, say, like thirty individuals that would like to discuss an item, we can set blocks of time, because we've, we've done that in the past. Is that still kind of allowed?
Yeah, yes. Again, the idea is to just be, as long as you're being internally consistent and making sure that, what we don't want to do is allow maybe one individual to speak, you know, an inordinate amount of time, seven minutes versus someone else who's only allowed the three minutes or something of that nature, because you just want to ensure that everyone has the same opportunity. So there are certain things that you can, you can make changes, changes to the process. Chapter five is an overview of your boards, commissions, and committees. Those can be established basically however the council wishes, either through ordinance or resolution. And the concept is that you are delegating authority for a recommendation to certain bodies. So the government code does allow for specific parameters for Planning Commission, but aside from that, it's really up to the council on, on how you would like to see the creation of ad hoc committees that are created for limited purposes or for a limited amount of time. And again, depending on the nature of your committee, those changes may be necessary or recommended to be included in your municipal code. But again, that's more of a case-by-case basis. The, the process, we do have laid out here a bullet point about the process for appointment of council members to these other entities. That might be another process you may want to consider changing, but your, your process is, is the same as, as it's always been. So again, very general overview of your handbook. Again, it's intended to be a living, living document in order to facilitate overseeing the orderly conduct of business. In this part of the presentation, we'll go over just a few suggested items. Again, the, this is, I'm, I'm going to hold it up to the council for feedback on any questions you have or changes you might want to see. Generally speaking, these are the parameters that we're looking at. As I mentioned, there's several portions of this that we cannot change. For example, anything that's already dictated under, under the government code, the Political Reform Act or any other regulations, the Brown Act, the Public Record Act, we can't make those specific changes. Areas for revision that you might want to consider have to do with your agenda, your agenda process. How do you, how do you, as a council, help develop ideas as the agenda is developing to come before you? That is one topic of discussion that we see in other jurisdictions. How much feedback can a council give ahead of time and not just maybe necessarily from the dais? Any deadlines associated with that process might be something open for discussion. The order of the items on the agenda is something that you can move around. We can discuss on how you would like that to proceed. The process for requesting presentations, proclamations is also another hot topic that has come up for other cities that, that I, that I represent. And any other procedures for conducting city businesses meeting at meetings is another topic for discussion for the council to provide us some feedback. So again, general overview of what your draft handbook looks like tonight. We're bringing this to you, as Maricela said, as having been compiled by staff with the option that the council can, we can open up for public comment, we can take revisions from the council. You can adopt it tonight if you wish, or if you want additional time to have staff go back and make changes, depending on what your request could be, we would make those changes, bring them back to you in red line so that you can consider them and approve them at a future meeting. So with that, I'll open up to the council for any questions, comments on your draft handbook.
So are there any council comments or questions?
Just, just kind of clarification, for the addition of the council referrals, would that fall under new business, or, or where would that be structured in the agenda?
Currently, we don't have, I don't believe we have a specific spot, but that is something that maybe your city manager can.
We don't have a specific spot for it, but we did detail that in the layout of the agenda that was included in the guidebook so that we could put it. So normally, it would probably come after new business, so that you're conducting all of your city business to begin with. And then those are, items are not items that you're going to be considering or making a determination on during that meeting, but you're simply bringing up those items that you would like to consider for a future agenda. but you're simply bringing up those items that you would like to consider for a future agenda.
Um, and then also, uh, going back to the committees and appointments. In the handbook, it says, uh, and I know some cities do it this way, the mayor points directly. Um, but from my few years of experience, we've done a volunteer first and kind of conducted it that way. I was also thinking through potentially extending, uh, the term for each appointment. Um, just generally, as people fall into new positions or new committees, it takes some time to really delve into it and, uh, be, uh, a participating, uh, impact for it. So, um, I'm all about rules and regulations and, uh, I would love to, uh, formally change that with you all to reflect our current practice um, and, and potentially do the extension for a two-year appointment.
Are, are we referring specifically to?
The intergovernmental committees and that kind of thing, yeah.
So like, uh, as, as you mentioned, other, other, you mentioned Stan Cog, we, we have, you know, Lafco.
John, Lafco, yes.
So those types of, um, appointments, okay.
Yeah, can I clarify that, Nubia? So those appointments for intergovernmental boards, they're not determined by us specifically, they're determined by those committees.
Right.
So you would like us to appoint for two-year terms instead of one?
Uh, so at the beginning of the year, when we go through, yes, yeah.
So instead of appointing each year for one?
Right.
One year, you would like to extend that?
Right.
Okay, our appointments to each.
Yeah, because in the, the language in the handbook itself, it says, the mayor shall announce the appointment of council members as members. Was I interpreting that wrong, or is that what that's saying?
So, so there, there are a couple iterations that you can look at. So for, as you mentioned, there are many jurisdictions that have the mayor making straight appointments to fill those positions. There are other jurisdictions that have, um, the mayor making a recommendation with a ratification by the council on those appointments. So it's really up to the council how, how you wish to do it. And so I think to your city clerk's point, that, um, we may not be able to change, um, the designation from those intergovernmental agencies, but we can change the term.
Right, yes.
I think that, that would be perfectly appropriate.
Mm-hmm. Um, so maybe, because I would like to consider what you had brought up as well as far as the, um, changing, so that instead of it being during the member comments, it's a set point in the agenda where council members can bring up, uh, a request to put on the agenda, um, so it doesn't get lost in the, all of the comments. Um, but formalize to what that has been for us and, and potentially extending that internally for two-year term.
So those are two separate items with the council referrals is what we're calling it in this document, um, being a formal section of our agenda. Um, so that we did build in, because we had heard, uh, previous, um, comments from council members about the process that we currently have in order to bring those items to everybody's attention. Uh, we thought this would be an easier route than trying to follow our somewhat convoluted policy and procedures that we have for, for adding items. Um, so that certainly is already included. We did decide that that would be a good option for us to include. And then with regards to the appointments, Nubia, I think what we're trying to do is, we're trying to mimic what we're currently doing where, once a year, um, council brings forth the list of intergovernmental appointments and, uh, city boards, and we have council members volunteer rather than the mayor being the sole individual who dictates, with the exception, of course, um, of those, uh, like Planning Commission and the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, where we have separate processes built into the approvals for, for those committees.
And, and I'll voice support for that. I think the flexibility, I, we appreciate it. This isn't a, we're not set up for a strong mayor system, so that flexibility is, is, is equal throughout all of the council members.
So.
I did have a question, no, go ahead.
Oh, to, just to wrap that portion up, so that I make sure that we have the right changes. Would this be, so as a volunteer basis, with a vote by the entire council to essentially confirm that appointment?
Yes, and if the council is open to it, I would love to consider a two-year appointment.
And so, and, and as far as term limits, I'm not sure if I want to go that far, just because interests change on a yearly basis. So I would, I would like to keep it to the one year, just because, say, I, maybe I want to, maybe I want to jump off this committee and maybe try another committee, maybe I'm not motivated. Not saying I'm not motivated, but what if I'm not motivated in this category? Now I'm stuck for another year when another council member may be able to push it to that next level that following year. So I, I would like to keep that flexibility, uh, as far as us kind of deciding and then keeping it to one year, because things kind of do change.
Alternatively, we could also put language in there that the default could be for two years absent, um, a request by council member to reopen it. Again, it does, these are just open for suggestions, it's really up to.
Yeah, we definitely don't want to hold someone to.
Yeah, I like the two years, because a lot of times it takes you a year just to get going in that committee, to understand what the committee is and what your place is and, and to get things moved forward. So I agree with the two-year, but with a, um, a little giddy that says, should there be a need to change, we could do it.
I think we should just leave that language off and just keep it to the one year, every year, reappointment if possible.
When we bring this back for council for a motion, we'll make sure to touch on these points, they were crystal clear. Um, but again, yes, this is good, good input. Any other, any other thoughts maybe before we open up for public comment?
Any other council comments or questions?
I think, um, just before, there was just one correction that we're, um, going to be recommending. It's really minor, it talks about the mayor state of the city. Right now, the document, for some reason, of course, it's a large document, so it was an oversight by us. It says it's sponsored by the City Chamber of Commerce. Of course, we, we know our practice has been that it's a, a city event, uh, rather than a sponsored event. So we'll just make that correction.
Thank you.
Any public comments or questions?
Hi, my name is Carol at three, four, four, two, Heskeyson. Um, I did mention, I saw that it said about the timewise, okay? So, uh, and to, how to refer it to other things? I think the, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, I think that's many, like she was trying to put everything she could into exactly so many minutes. And I don't know if that should almost be, especially this, the Chamber of Commerce is growing, and many, many of the items that they do is connected with the city. Even if it's the Easter or whatever it is, even my event, it's going to be happening at the end of April. Um, it's a, uh, something that is done with the city and, and they even pay the, the city for their different items that they have to pay for, of course. But, uh, uh, but you have to control it too at the same time. So I think, I don't know if Chamber of Commerce should be part of the agendas even, and maybe that might be a subject. So that way they can get different times on that, stuff like that. So anyway, thank you.
Yeah, there are public comments or questions? Okay, seeing none. If there's no more, no further comments from the council, is there a motion? Um, yeah, is there a motion?
So a couple of options, you can make a motion with the amended amendments that were recommended. Um, and then you'll get a final version of that document when it's prepared. Or if you would like us to bring back a red line, uh, version of that prior to it being formally adopted, then we can do that at a future meeting.
So kind of, kind of clarify the red line version before I make a motion here.
So the red line version will give you a second opportunity to review the recommended changes that we've discussed at this point in time. Otherwise, you can make a motion to approve the resolution and the guidebook, and we will just give you a final version at that point in time.
With the amendments.
Correct, with the changes.
With the changes. Considering the fact that the changes are not extensive, if the council feels comfortable, then we can just move forward with a motion with, and, and we'll go with the amendments, and we'll make sure that we're all on the same page about what those amendments are.
Okay, okay, okay. So I'll make a motion for item eleven point one, uh, to approve the amendments.
So to be approved with the amendments that, from what I understand, will include a revision to the agenda for placement of a council member referral line item.
Right.
With changes to remove the, um, sponsorship of the chamber from the handbook inadvertent, um, addition. And with changes to the appointment process for intergovernmental committees to, to reflect council member volunteering for, um, for appointment with ratification by the council for a two-year term, subject to, um, a council member wishing to bring that, basically change that halfway through the term. I mean, that, that's, that's one, it's one that I think might be, need a little bit more clarification from the council.
So do you need clarification for that item before we make the motion for amendment, or should we just do the red line version?
Up to the council.
Okay, that's, that's where I'm, that's where I'm leaning towards, so that's why I'm not sure yet.
So under that, so under, this is precisely why, this is, all happens in real time. Maybe the council will wish to see it actually in written form, um, for your next meeting to see exactly what we're, what we're proposing.
And I think the turnaround on the red line would be pretty quick.
It'll be at your next meeting.
Okay.
And, and again, it'll be in red line, so you can easily see it. We won't include the entire handbook, maybe we'll just include the pages where these specific changes are, so you don't have to go taking through it.
I think that's perfect. Okay, so I'll make a motion for eleven, eleven point one for the red line version.
A second. Mayor Rockall, please.
Councilmember Odebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Koff?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fossey?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes by zero.
Thank you. Uh, I need, um, eleven point two wastewater treatment plant feasibility study.
Mayor and council, this item has been placed on the agenda at the request of Vice Mayor Fossey, so she will be presenting.
Thank you, Maricela. So what I'm presenting today is a consideration for a feasibility study. Um, I'm presenting it to the mayor, city council, and the public. It's an option to have a new pump station and pipeline to the North Valley Regional Water Project and the costs associated with this new construction. And I'll go through what this really means. Um, so a little bit of history. Um, during my last term as a council member from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty, I was an analyst for the city of Modesto, I worked for the sewer division. At that time, they were building North Valley Regional Water Project. Therefore, I discussed with the city manager at the time about Riverbank possibly sending our water to Modesto, but this option, my understanding, was never brought forward, um, after I was off of council. Um, June twenty twenty-one, KSN presented a public review, a draft document for the recycle water production and use study reports. The study, the scope of the study was developed to evaluate alternatives to the wastewater treatment plant to produce, excuse me, recycled water and to evaluate alternatives for recycle water use in the plant. And I just wanted noted, no other options outside of recycled water project were formally evaluated. December twenty twenty-two, KSN completed their fifteen percent preliminary design report and final sewer rate study with increases going up to a hundred nine thirty-nine per month by twenty twenty-seven. At the time, Riverbank was told that we were in a good position for applying for financial assistance, primarily grants and some loans. And I've put on here the proposed rates going up to twenty twenty-seven. I'd like you to note that it is a monthly fee, but we are billed bimonthly. Um, and if you're on Facebook, you just got a notice yesterday that your fees went up January. And right now, they are at one sixty-two, six, sixty per billing cycle. April twenty twenty-four, KSN completed their thirty percent design. September twenty twenty-four, they contracted with Brown and Caldwell for your sixty percent design. And January twenty twenty-five, KSN came and presented an update on the Riverbank Regional Recycled Water Project, included updated costs to a hundred and twenty million and updated funding information to include primarily loans as grants seem to be limited currently based on reports to council in twenty twenty-four and current government administration. Now, this is regarding the Riverbank Regional Recycle Water Project that is currently being designed. So, um, while working at the city of Modesto, I gained a lot of experience on sewer, sometimes more than I really wanted to. Um, so I have, I want to go over three different options that could happen here at the city of Riverbank at the wastewater treatment plant. Number one is what we're doing now, which is construct a Riverbank Regional Recycle Water Project at the Riverbank Wastewater Treatment Plant. Number two is construct a pump station and a pipeline from Riverbank to the North Valley Regional Recycle Water Project, which is already built. Third, it's not been brought up, but gotta have all of them. Um, change our permit with the state water resources board to allow discharge of treated wastewater to, to Walomee River to accommodate our additional water that we'll get from, um, build out. So I'm going to go through each one of these, so you kind of have an understanding. Um, construction of the current Riverbank Regional Water Recycle, Recycle Water Project. Now you notice it says regional, it's not really regional, it's just Riverbank, which is, um, a concern to me. Uh, the costs currently are estimated to be a hundred and twenty million dollars, up from ninety million in twenty twenty-one. Most of these costs will be paid for by ratepayers. Costs presented do not include operations and maintenance costs after construction or additional staff, which would probably be needed since it'll be a twenty-four seven operation. And there's no clarification if the water will be discharged three hundred and sixty-five days a year to the farmers, which is a requirement for recycled water treatment. The second option is, uh, construction of a pipe, pump station and pipeline. This is what I'm hoping to do a feasibility study on. Construction will move untreated wastewater through a new pump station and pipeline from Riverbank to the North Valley Regional Water Project. Now, um, for those of the, of you that are not familiar with the northern, with North Region, North Valley, that's a lot of words. Uh, North Valley Regional Water Project, it's based, it's a regional project for, uh, recycled water tertiary treatment with Modesto Turlock Series, Del Porto and San Luis County. It's completed in twenty eighteen at a cost of a hundred and twenty million. It moves twenty million gallons per day. The project that they're proposing for Riverbank is also around a hundred and twenty million dollar right now, and it only moves two point nine million gallons per day. So just to give you a little bit of perspective of the cost. Um, there would be no treatment most likely needed at the current Riverbank wastewater facility, because we will be moving everything to Modesto through the pipeline, and then no additional staff, as current staff could monitor the progress. The third option, um, is to change our permit to discharge wastewater to the river. Uh, we would have to work with the state water resources board to issue a non, it's called an MPDES, which is a National Pluton Discharge Elimination System Permit, and that's required to discharge the river. The current wastewater treatment plant wouldn't be able to add more capacity by being able to discharge to the river. And there's a possibility of additional employees, and there would probably need to be updates to the plant. So this is another, um, slide that shows you our current sewer rates. And I noticed when I was putting this together, now the four on the bottom currently do not have rates through twenty twenty-seven, and most of them are currently doing a sewer rate study. But the ones on the top, I was able to find their rates anticipated for twenty twenty-seven. So if you look at the current monthly rates, Riverbank is the highest by a penny. But in twenty twenty-seven, we're about thirty dollars a month higher than Sonora. And I've noticed on here too, the population. Um, so that just kind of gives you a comparison of what we're paying for cities around the area. So the current Riverbank Regional Recycled Water Project. So I talked with the State Water Resources Control Board about this project, and I was thinking that maybe we were required by the state to do a recycle plant, but they are not requiring it. So we're not being pushed by the state to build a recycled water plant. I also talked with them about regionalization. The Riverbank project does not qualify as a regionalization, because we're only using Riverbank water. However, North Valley Regional Water Project does qualify, because it has Modesto Turlock Series. And so it is a regional project, and they were excited that I was calling them to ask about it. Um, the cost for the recycle plant, current construction cost, current construction costs keep increasing. We went from ninety million, now we're at a hundred and twenty million. There's no operations and maintenance costs for after it's built. Additional staff will need, um, salaries and, and benefits. And then the sewer rates on Riverbank are already high and go considerably higher with this project. And as a citizen. high and go considerably higher with this project. And as a citizen, and quite frankly, as a single person, single income in my household, it's harder to pay these increased sewer fees. So why do a feasibility study? Well, to determine the feasibility of sending our water to North Valley Regional Project, is this a good thing to do? Is it worthwhile looking into? It'll determine whether it's a more economical option and ultimately could reduce rates in what is currently being assessed. Your rates right now are permanent. They're just suggested rates, just so you know. I mean, they could go down, they could go up. Determine if it will be effective for current capacity and future capacity as we build out. Current design of the Riverbank Regional Water Project by KSN will continue during this feasibility study. They can go in sync. And then it meets the City of Riverbank's strategic plan by continuing to develop Regional Waste Resources Treatment Plant and identify funding for project completion. Basically, what I'm asking is for my fellow city council members to authorize the city manager to go out and do a bid to do a feasibility study to see if this project would be worthwhile. I have talked with the City of Modesto, only to confirm that they will take our water, not anything extensive, just a small conversation. And they are willing. They said that we could be part of this project, and it would be considerably lower than doing the recycled water plant. So I'm hoping that, there's questions, so I can answer those, but also that, recommendation, this is my recommendation, that the study evaluate the construction of the new lift station and pipeline. Cost of the study, that's important. It's $50,000 to $75,000. But the City of Modesto has agreed to split that cost with us, reducing it down to $25,000 to $37,500 for the City of Riverbank. And it will confirm with the City of Riverbank that whatever the feasibility comes back, that we're doing the best thing for our taxpayers and making, and making sure that we're spending our money appropriately. So I'm hoping that city council will approve. Mayor Sella going out and getting information to put a feasibility study together and come back with those costs. And I'm open to any questions.
Are there any council comments or questions? Are there any public comment?
So give me, give me a second. I do have notes, so if one of the other council members wants to go first, while I try to pull it up here.
So I would like to support this, just to, I mean, with the, the conversation we had about the mid-year budget, gas taxes impacting the budget, water rate study having to be done to reassess the 2019 rates, and then these increasing fees over the next three years. I think it would be worthwhile to just compare and contrast costs of the different projects and to figure out exactly, I guess, what it says here, a way that our taxpayers can understand and frankly, all of us understand both options for this. Is that enough time for you?
Okay, so I mean, this was an email. I tried my search feature, so I apologize. I wasn't able to pull up the, the notes here. We can back up to a little bit close to the beginning, and I'm going to probably ask Cody to kind of verify some of this stuff. If not, is that the very beginning there? Sorry, I got a lot of thoughts on, on this one. So, okay. So if we're, so first question is that they're discharging into the Tuolumne River. Is that, is that the practice that they're doing at the moment? And that's, that's the, that's the recommendation for this?
Currently, they discharge into the river, but the, the water that goes into the river goes to Del Porto, to Del Porto for the farmers.
Okay. And then, so, so the suggestion is to, is to connect to the Modesto, and we're probably thinking the Tivoli project area, right, to the, to the south of us?
Actually, what I'm, the pipe that goes over Jacob Myers Park in River Cove, I'm thinking on this side of the river.
Okay.
We would put a lift station there, and piping would go to the closest or most accessible place for it to go to City of Riverbank.
Okay. And so when talking to, to staff, they're thinking just to be able to, to send all of our wastewater to Modesto, it's going to probably be minimum three trunk lines.
That's not what I'm hearing from Modesto.
Okay.
Modesto says one pipeline. Then that's, that is another reason for the feasibility study, because if it is only one, that's substantially less expensive. If it does become three, then obviously it would not be a good project. But at this time, they're talking one pipeline that would take it to Modesto.
Okay. And, and just so, just so the residents are aware, this was discussed in 2017, this idea of kind of connecting to the Modesto wastewater treatment. And then I jumped on to council 2018. I kind of reassessed it, reached out to council member Chris Ricky, talked to kind of staff, and then it didn't make sense. You do see increases over time. For example, the City of Oakdale did their tertiary and did it for a fraction of the costs. And, and with this economy just kind of scaling and scaling up, so you do see these costs kind of going up. That's not to our benefit, right? And so when we did these assessments, we were aggressively seeking FEMA grants and the BRIC grants, which, I don't know if our consultant is on Zoom, or if they are here, if they can give us kind of an update on where we're at with the BRIC grant and where that's in, in the process. I don't know if they can kind of chime in there.
I believe that their last presentation, they said that they have sent them to FEMA, but there's concerns that, number one, the availability of grants is not as high as it was, say, five years ago, or even a year ago. And with the current administration, who knows what's going to be available?
So as shared at the last meeting, the FEMA BRIC grant application was submitted and is currently in what we call the request for information phase. So the last round of questions that we received from the staff that's evaluating our project was in December of 2024, mostly related to the environmental, which we had to do an amendment for and which will come to city council within the next couple of months in order for us to respond back to the program administrators.
Okay, so it, so it does sound, the, the ability to acquire that 50 million grant is still there, it's still on the table. We have been successful with the state revolving fund and, and acquiring these lower rates to pay for, to pay for these projects. And, and Cody can talk about this a little bit more in depth. The reason why we're trying to do this, and this, and this does, this does not tie into any kind of other development, whether it's to the west of that or not. So we are, we are almost at capacity, right? And so we have to do something to upgrade the facility. That's, that's just what it is at the moment. And so doing it this way, the proactive way, where we kind of get to dictate, reaching out, getting the grants, getting the loans at those lower rates, and if we are successful, then using that 50 million grant to lower that 120 number, we reassess it like Cindy Fosse said, and drop everybody's rates. Not one person on the council, when we moved this project forward, wanted to raise anybody's rates. I don't want to pay these rates, right? And so that's been the goal this entire time, right, is to get these grants, get the tertiary upgraded, because it needs to be anyways, and then be able to reduce the rates when we acquire it. So that's, that's where I'm at. And so we've already spent, I don't want to put you on the spot, Cody. I was trying to find your email. Can you just give me a breakdown of the costs we've put into it? And all of the costs that Cody's going to mention is reimbursable. So yes, we've spent this money. It's reimbursable. If we stop going down this route, the money will be lost, because it won't be reimbursable anymore.
Correct. Currently, between the 15% design, 30% design, and our active 60% design, we have allotted approximately $5 million towards the design of this project. The 30% design was 1.2 million with Brown and Caldwell and about $400,000 with KSN. And the 60% design was about $2 million with Brown and Caldwell and another $400,000 to $600,000 with KSN as program management. And then we had some fees that were associated prior to me coming on with the 15% preliminary design report.
And, and that doesn't include any of the, like, the staff time that you guys have put in as well?
That's correct. Administrative time is not included in.
That's not even, we haven't even added that into, into the factor. So we're close to $6 million, and we're about to say, sorry, taxpayers, just kidding, we're going to go the other way and just forget about the, the $6 million. When you, when you look at the, the slide where it's kind of showing the rates by city and by population, every city is different, right? The populations are different. So Modesto can spread the cost between way more people, right? And that's why it's $46 and then $49. So they have the population to spread out the costs there, right? We don't know what else is going on in those other cities, whether they're bonding, whether they're cutting back the CIPs, the capital improvement projects, right? We have no idea what's kind of going on. So kind of, kind of comparing economy of scale, you have to look at the big picture, right? And I just look at the, look at the numbers here. And then if we are successful, the 109, that's not where I'm trying to go. That, that's not where the initial intent was when we went for this, right? We knew if we were going to access these grants and the loans, we have to show, we have to pay for it, right? And so that's why the increases started. But the entire, the entire goal of the council was to get those grants, reassess it, drop it back down, have an improved plant. And so that's where the, that's where we've been. That's what we've been doing for years, and I think we should continue this. We're, we're still in the running for the 50 mil. We're going to have discussions about the state revolving fund very soon. And so I think, I think we stay on course. But that's my opinion.
Just to add, first of all, Modesto, their population is high, and it does, of course, cover some of the costs. But remember, they do 20 million per day. We only do two. So they have a lot more water than we have going through our system. Also, with adding, going to Modesto, we would probably, most likely be able to get grants for construction as it will be part of a regionalization project. So that will help cover the costs, and the costs will most likely be half of what we're currently looking at. So we're talking reducing $60 million. So, you know, $6 million that we've already spent, I understand that. But do we want to save $60 million, or do we want to pay? And, and the grants are not 100% for sure. But like I said, the feasibility study will go on, just like the 60% drawings are going on, just like the application for the grants will go on. And if by the time we get the feasibility study back and we find out we get this, then we move the other way. But I'm just concerned that we're not doing our job to make sure that we're getting the best project for the best money for the City of Riverbank. Being a City of Modesto employee and watching that project get built, it's pretty amazing. And being able to be part of it would be a nice thing and a lot cheaper, a lot less expensive. But maybe we find out it's not. But for, you know, $35,000, let's find out. Let's get a definite answer that this is not the best project for the City of Modesto, or I'm sorry, for the City of Riverbank. Maybe it's not. But what if it is, and we save $60, $80 million?
Are there any other, are we going to make a comment?
I think my concern tying in with Modesto, too, is that we're putting our growth in Modesto's hands. So we're adding 2 million gallons a day to them. What if they come to a point where they're trying to grow too, and then they tell us, well, you need to help pay for improvement projects, because now we can't take any more of your waste product, and you can't grow either, because you're maxed out at 2 million?
I have talked to them to make sure that they could accommodate our increased capacity, because we will be increasing. There's no doubt there. And they have said that they have plenty of availability to take it in. I don't see that there will be an issue with that. But then again, that's another thing that the feasibility study would do, is look at Modesto and make sure that they can take it. We don't want to go with Modesto and find out, you know, 10 years down the road, they can't. But I have been told that they can handle our increased capacity.
Are, go ahead.
Just, just to remind you, in the study, when he presented in January, he said that we're talking about going up to 2.9 with buildout. So it's 0.9 right now, or a million gallons per day. So it's not, it's not 5 million or anything. It's, it's 1 million right now is their anticipated growth.
To me, there's families already struggling, and it sounds like a huge risk. What about the lower-income families that are already trying to make ends meet? And, and are we willing to take this gamble?
Well, I, I understand that, but to me, it's not a gamble, because we're looking to see, make sure we're making the right choice. Just like when we look at the budget, we look at the budget and we say, okay, is that really the best choice? Is this the best choice? Is this where we want to reduce? And we investigate that. I'm just bringing this forward, because I feel that the cost of the recycle plant is, is high. I have some concerns about the presentation that I did not bring up yet, because I was bringing, knew I would probably bring this forward. Lots of questions about the, one of the main things I have, like, I don't know if Cody can answer this, but my understanding from the state water resources board is that the recycled, recycled water has to go to the farmers 365 days a year. Are the farmers able to do that?
There has been no indication from the state that it has to be supplied 365 days a year to the farmers. The way we laid it out to the farmers, or sorry, to the state, is that we would provide irrigation water to the farmers during irrigation months. And in the off-season, we utilize our nine existing ponds for storage, and then we can pull that water back to be re-treated and sent to the farmers during the irrigation season. Because the two farmers that are currently interested in the water, each one of them could actually take all of our flow plus more. So there is a storage component associated with the upgrade project that would allow us to hold on to that treated water throughout the wintertime, which would basically be October through, say, end of March, and then pump that water back through the, the process and sell it to the farmers.
Thank you. Let's move to public comments. Are?
I got, I got one more comment, if that's okay. Permits, that was kind of mentioned in the slide there. What would happen if we hypothetically went this route with our permits?
No matter what the result, if we were to upgrade the facility, we're going to reopen our permit for review with the state. If we send our wastewater to City of Modesto, again, we will reopen our permit. The reopener is usually based upon if there's a significant change to your treatment process or your disposal process. If we send it to City of Modesto, there would be a significant change in our disposal process, because we are no longer disposing of the water here. The other thing to think about, too, is that 1.5 million gallons a day of water that we currently recharge our groundwater with in our, in our area would be going to South Modesto, Del Porto Irrigation District, for them to utilize instead of Riverbank constituents.
And not landing in our sub-basin?
Correct.
Which would be another reason that we want to have the feasibility study done, to see if that can be split off. There's a lot of reasons to do the feasibility study. For me, there's a lot of questions about whether it's right choice. For me, it seems logical that it's the right choice because of construction costs. But also, is it the best choice for us and, and for our increases in capacity? And it just concerns me that, especially when I heard their presentation, unfortunately, I haven't heard a lot of their presentation, but I have a lot of questions based on my knowledge that I have from working at the city. I have a lot of questions about their process and why is it $120 million? Why does it keep increasing every time? You know, why, I did not see any operations and maintenance costs for after construction, which is an ongoing cost that there will be. There's a lot of questions. But I, I think this is something that we need to look at for the citizens to know that we are giving them the best option. And when the City of Modesto is going to split us, split it with us, the cost isn't as high.
Sorry, last question. It's on my mind. My understanding is the City of Waterford is tied into the Modesto water. Is, is there any truth to that? Does staff know? Does staff know?
City of Waterford used to be a customer of the city of Modesto for their drinking water, but they recently, well, in the past five or six years, purchased that water system from the city of Modesto.
Yeah, no, I, I know. It's just, just the joint, yeah, the joint.
Move to public comment. Uh, are there any comments or questions from the public?
Campbell, resident of uh, City of Riverbank, I happened to be on the council when we went through this in twenty seventeen. We went through it very thoroughly. And I have two questions to ask Cindy, our vice mayor. What's Modesto getting out of this? I don't believe they're gonna get something for free. And how's it gonna continue? Explain that.
Well, they're getting water that the, that will send.
Our water, right?
And um, right, but they're also getting turbid.
I have a problem with that. We are, I don't know if you've known, been taking care of knowing what's happening in the future. I've been reading a whole lot that about in fifty years, we're gonna be a lot hotter than we are now. And we'll need that water because of the climate changes that are coming. And you need to look at that for the future, not just right now. This is happening all over the world. And it's gonna, I've got some friends in higher places that have told me this. It's not something with my imagination. We need to that, keep that in line for this. I don't particularly like, cause I grew up in Oakdale and Riverbank. I worked on farms. I don't like our water going to Riverbank, uh, to, to Modesto. We need it over here. And we need it especially if we, our droughts get worse as it's predicted in the next fifty years. Uh, well, a good friend of mine said that it's going to be so hot that up in Washington, the wineries are gonna be up there because it's gonna be too hot down here. And that's what they're predicting. So you gotta look at the future. The planet's changing very greatly. And we need to take care of our own. Uh, I don't dislike Modesto, but Modesto's gonna take care of Modesto before they take care of us. Thank you.
Any other public comment or question?
Hey, uh, Mayor, council members, Olivia Ramby, the broker owner of Time's World Estate here in Riverbank. I live here. Um, I actually have more than one property that I pay the water for and sewage. And so I think that if we can just look at the feasibility study, maybe there's something that they can actually get to help reduce whatever's going on with the project that we have. I don't know. I didn't create it. I wasn't here for that. But I'd rather spend thirty-five thousand dollars on something than spend the sixty million and also see what's options we can still have. We may have spent six million, but a hundred and twenty million is a lot of money. Also, um, I'm not sure if that study's gonna show the elements that we have in the water. We sometimes will get that letter with our water bill that shows what is in our water in Riverbank versus other cities. If we can make sure that that is included in the study, there were times where I have gone through that and in crossroads, there were percentages of items in our water that I wouldn't want to drink. So if we can just make sure that's included in this visi- uh, this feasibility study, if that is an option to just look at the elements that are in the water here versus Modesto and everything that's feeding in, if that does become an option that we have in the future. But I would, I would like to see that feasibility study done because I like numbers. I like to see it. I want to know what's going on. I want to know what options are. Thank you.
Just to clarify, this is for wastewater? This is not for the water which you're talking about, which is in the wells and such. So most likely that would not be included. This for, is for wastewater, which is what goes down your drain, when you flush the toilet, those type of things and from businesses and everybody. Okay? Just wanted to clarify.
No, thank you, because I'm, I'm thinking it's for the other water. Cause I, that was been my understanding every time I've come up here and come to the meetings, which I come to every single meeting pretty much unless there's an emergency in the family. So that was my understanding is that it was gonna be for that as well. But again, if that, I just want to see where, what's happening with the waste, how it's, I just want to make sure everything's not going to the river also. I just want to check that out because I just want to know what's going on. I don't know. I'd like to know the facts.
Well, hopefully when they do the study.
Don't always have them straight on myself, but I'm sorry. Yeah, we can, we can get that.
Any other public comment?
We have a couple on Zoom, Mayor.
Back to you. We'll come back. Thank you.
Uh, Ms., go ahead, Mr. Pearson.
Uh, good evening. Um, been listening to this discussion and uh, several comments on any of the either feasibility, which I would support, uh, just to know the comparable costs. And also the KSN or KNS project. I want to know if there are opportunities for value-added engineering. And if you don't know what that term means, it means that look at every single aspect of a project. And look at ways to reduce the overall costs. That's called value-added engineering. And then secondly, uh, during uh, certain presentations that I've listened to KNS, I haven't heard anything about emergency conditions. That means that that pipe that runs across uh, the river, uh, it has broken twice in recent history. That means that all that raw sewage goes down the river. Um, and then third, um, I'm well aware of other municipalities uh, in our region. And I would ask the council to consider looking at uh, Sacramento County, which does all of its wastewater treatment from the municipality of Sacramento. I think it would be wise to look at what they do. That's all.
Thank you. Number ending in three, one, zero, eight. Can you please unmute? Number ending in three, one, zero, eight. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Please go ahead.
Um, I have a question. Um, on the feasibility feasibility study, it says that the study would evaluate the construction of a new list station pipeline. That's the only thing they're looking at. I'm, I'm according to this. So once they do this, then you got repairs and maintenance to this stuff. Um, you got repair uh, to get the sewers up over to Modesto. Then you've got the plant over there that's gonna clean it up. All that stuff, repairs made, whatever goes on over there and gets it to the river. So all that costs, Modesto was gonna be charging us for that, use of that, for repairing, whatever, whatever happens, we're gonna have to pay a portion of that also, just like we do now for Riverbank to cover all that. Or are you, eh, why isn't this feasibility study evaluating all of the costs to this project and not just the construction part of it? Um, right, and, and then thirdly is, I don't know if Modesto's fee works, but our fee is a prop three, uh, prop two eighteen fee. So I would think that you would have to go out uh, for more than just doing it and not saying anything to go out to the public and ask them if we, you know, under prop two eighteen, you would have to follow that if you're gonna take that away from us or change it. However that works, are we gonna be paying River, Riverbank for our sewer lines and stuff here and then paying another one from Modesto for using their pump and all that stuff and their thing over there? Because none of that seems to be evaluated. And I think that should all be evaluated if you're gonna do a feasibility study. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Eggers, if you can please unmute?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I think it's important to understand and stay focused tonight. You're not choosing tonight to change direction from Riverbank's own recycled water project and mega expansion of the wastewater treatment facility. You're choosing to get more data to make sure you're making an informed decision. And I, I would struggle to think that the council couldn't support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, that is on Zoom.
Add one more public comment here in person.
Thank you, Dear Daniel, Snow White Drive-In. Um, it's for the survey itself, I think you should start tomorrow morning. Uh, I mean, you need to get the data and then you need to not hold on to it, but get it to the either the public or certain other peoples that's been, the farmers, whoever. Um, I've been uh, been paying the water bill at, you know, Snow White since ninety-three and Snow White's been doing it since sixty-three. So uh, and it was twenty bucks. It was cheap. We're talking sewer even. Sewer was really cheap and it all of a sudden from twenty bucks to two hundred and twenty bucks to four hundred dollars. And then they made a mistake and like that. I also have that time, that short uh, whatever I have done is water was free and at population eight thousand, it's really usable. That there was a lot of machinery that I had that was older machinery that was water cooled and water this and water that. I had a lot of different items. And now they've made more efficient that's air cooled. Um, and it cost me a lot of money to get an air cooled machine versus water cooled. But when they jacked up the water rates and sewer rates, it's just, I had to switch it and things like that. I also have a boat in Stockton in the Delta. So what that means is, yes, of course we want clean, clean water. You know, all the way. Water doesn't just stop somewhere. It goes, it goes. So the farmers need the uh, I guess you call it brown water, then give it to the farmers, you know, I've uh, uh, especially if they need it. And that way they're not pumping out fresh, clean drinking water where plants, farmers want more brown water in a way, right? So if we have abundance of brown water, then we should definitely try to make a point to get it to them. Uh, but yes, you know, nobody does things for free. So yes, you're gonna have to do your homework on figuring out what is Modesto's true system. And you have to plan. I've been, Snow White's been there sixty years. So you gotta plan for another sixty plus plus years for the other people, your future kids, whatever. So, thank you.
Any other public comments or questions? So I'll bring it back to the council and um, yeah, I mean, with the understanding it's not gonna, I was one of the people who uh, voted to continue with the um, Riverbank uh, Regional Recycled Water Plant uh, with the understanding that there was gonna be uh, supplement, a subsidy of grants. Um, I guess there was just a flag raised when uh, last year we had a conversation that there is a potential for more uh, reliance on loans versus the grants. And so I, I would like to, I mean, in good conscience, would like to support getting more data and more information um, regarding these, this feasibility study. I mean, knowing it's not gonna stop any of our ongoing work currently. Um, are there any other council comments or questions?
So I'm not opposed to obviously getting more data. Uh, but I think if the data, even if the feasibility study was free, even if Modesto said, hey, connect us for free, draining the sub-basin alone is not the route I would like to go. So I'm gonna be against this.
Your questions or comments? Okay. Uh, if uh, there is a motion, would you like to consider it at this time?
So we would like direction with regard to the request. Obviously, any request would need to come back for a formal motion at a later time um, by the city council. So at this point, it's providing direction um, to staff with regards to the site.
So mine's been given, I think, pretty clear.
Um, I would like to consider or look at the data that this feasibility study would provide to us. I recently attended a Stanislaus and Tuolumne Rivers Groundwater Basin. Um, it's a long acronym association and, and it showed that generally like our part of the ground basin is in a surplus and there's a greater management questions um, as well that, that I'm kind of looking into. I would like to provide some feedback to the city council on and provide, and ask for feedback as well. Um, but, but for this, I would like to uh, see some data to be able to consider it together.
I too would like more data. However, I do think that doing um, this study and given where we are in the process with the wastewater treatment plant, we're leaving ourselves exposed in a way with the state, like we don't really know what we're doing. Um, and they can come in and potentially kind of put some regulation on what we're doing and how we're gonna do it. Um, so for me, it's a no.
I'm gonna agree with Call. It's a no.
So that means we will not progress with evaluating a feasibility study.
Thank you. Okay, item eleven point three of resolution authorizing a joint application to and participation in the Home Key Plus program.
Mayor and council, uh, this item was pulled from our last uh, city council meeting, as you may have recalled. Uh, but we are bringing this forward as this is a very exciting opportunity for us to partner with a local nonprofit to bring affordable housing to the city of Riverbank. We've had discussions about regional housing needs allocation. You recently had multiple workshops with regards to our housing element. And we are here in an effort to be able to have housing for resident, residents of all income levels within our city. So the opportunity that we have currently is a Home Key Plus grant application. So I'm gonna go through my presentation quickly here. Uh, as the city council uh, may recall, we do have a strategic plan objective that will engage the community and nonprofit partners in the development of programs, facilities, transitional housing and or solutions for homeless services. In July of twenty-one, we purchased their Sierra House with the use of our American Rescue Plan Act funds. And in October of twenty twenty-one, we were awarded a grant in order to do the rehabilitation of the Sierra House and the construction of the day use facility. Uh, council envisioned implementing a second phase of those services to our unhoused residents um, through the uh, construction of a transitional housing project. And with an effort to be able to move forward with that second phase, in April of twenty-two, we did purchase the Jackson and Stanislaus property. As subsequent to that, we went ahead and issued a request for proposals for development of that transitional, or we then added an opportunity to do permanent supportive housing. Um, and we did uh, have conversations and award that to Rebuilding Green and Central Valley Community Resources, um, as they were the selected uh, individuals. We do have the Senator Eggman funds that we've discussed multiple times. And at one of the last council meetings, we did go ahead and allocate those funds towards a project with Rebuilding Green and Central Valley Community Resources or CVCR. In September twenty twenty-four, uh, with various discussions that we had been having council about a park site or park opportunities in that area of town, um, we did go ahead and uh, transition the use of the site from transitional or permanent supportive housing um, to have that be a park. And then just last month, um, the one point five million dollar balance approximately that we have uh, from Senator Eggman funds were uh, once again reallocated to a project with CVCR. So at this point in time, um, we have been actively working on a Home Key Plus application with CVCR Inc. So what is Home Key Plus? Let me go through some of the background information with regards to what this grant is intended to do. So was adopted, uh, Proposition One was adopted by voters in March of twenty twenty-four and included authorization for the creation of the Behavioral Health Services Act and the Behavioral Health Infrastructure Bond Act. Uh, Home Key Plus is the permanent supportive housing component of that bond act. So for members of the public, the Bond Act actually authorizes the state to go out and actively seek funding in order to provide a uh, revenue source to local jurisdictions in order to implement these types of projects within their cities. Uh, the Bond Act also provides support, will provide support for development of housing for veterans and individuals with mental health or substance abuse disorder challenges who are at risk of or experiencing homelessness. That's the key component of this Home Key Plus, which uh, is different from Home Key, which is another which, uh, is different from Home Key, which is another program that the state of California offers. That one offers, uh, grant funding towards permanent supportive housing, whereas Home Key Plus has the added component of requiring that supportive services be provided for those who are experiencing mental health or substance abuse disorders. And of course, um, focusing in on our veterans. Uh, local, uh, ed eligible applicants are local public entities such as the city of Riverbank, counties and public housing authorities. Tribal entities and individual housing developers can also apply on their own. Eligible uses of the grant can be for acquisition, rehabilitation of existing sites. So if we happen to have a, um, a motel or hotel or apartments that need rehabilitation, funding can be used towards that as long as you're serving the target population, um, that's required through the grant. Commercial properties, there's been a lot of legislation about allowing, um, multifamily housing on commercial vacant properties. So these funds can be used towards that. And of course, new construction, um, which is one, uh, component of the project that we're presenting today. As I mentioned earlier, Home Key Plus does require that you have a mental health or substance abuse disorder service that's provided onsite to your residents. So it does, the grant does require coordination with county mental health or our behavioral health department with the community, uh, continuum of care, which in our, uh, county is called the CSOC, um, the local managed care plans and with the U S Department of Veterans Affairs. So the project that's being proposed for grant funding is the Riverbank Residential Home Village. Uh, they are requesting a twenty million dollar grant with the target population being transitional age youth who are aging out of foster care, unhoused families in the Riverbank School District, and of course, as initially described in the grant requirements, veterans, um, and their families. The project is, uh, looking to be located on the northwest corner of Morel and Oakdale. Uh, the longer piece that has the, the little triangle, um, piece at the top is actually right next door to our sports complex. Uh, so the lot, both lots together are four point nine two acres. And the project is proposing sixty seven two bedroom units, um, with each unit being approximately six hundred and forty square feet. Uh, they are proposing that this is going to be a gated community to ensure the safety of its residents. There will be an onsite manager to oversee daily operations and maintenance. There'll be a twenty four hour live feed of, for video surveillance. Uh, development will include a playground for children to be able to use onsite, a dog park and a community garden. And of course, uh, as a requirement, uh, for all of the, uh, residents who will stay there, it will be a drug and alcohol free community. I mentioned that the, a requirement for onsite supportive services is important and key to being able to apply. So they will be offering mental health services, uh, educational classes, employment assistance and life skill training. So they will have a supportive services building that will be located onsite so that residents do not have to travel outside of the city or outside of their own development in order to receive those services. Uh, Central Valley Community Resources staff is currently undergoing certification for the restart program. So they'll be able to offer a lot of these services themselves while partnering with local behavioral health services in order to provide some of the mental health assistance. And the homes will come fully furnished, which of course for our residents that are, um, of lower income will certainly help for them to be able to have a place to just simply move into and not have to worry about purchasing items. Um, Central Valley Community Resources has been, uh, undergoing a public awareness campaign. Uh, they have an informational flyer that they have been sharing door to door in Crossroads East and in Crossroads West. Uh, they did share that at their crab feed, which they held a couple of weeks ago. And it's also been shared at the Federated Women's Club meeting on, um, February eighteenth. And if the project moves forward and is approved, uh, with grant funding, there'll be additional opportunities for them to do community forums to address concerns of the neighbors and receive additional feedback. Now, the project itself has not gone through the entitlement process with the city, meaning it has not been, uh, presented to the planning commission for consideration of approval. So there will be additional public hearings, um, that will need to be held in order for that to be formally approved. Uh, this is just a quick snapshot of the flyer that they have been sha- uh, sharing with residents, which is, uh, just a basic overview of the services that they're going to offer um, in the community support that they've been receiving. And this is a basic layout of the site plan. Um, as I mentioned earlier, there is sixty seven two bedroom units being proposed, all with onsite parking. Uh, where you see sort of the roundabout area, that's where the, uh, supportive services building is going to be. And then surrounding that, um, will be the playground and a dog park. And then there's a lot of green space built into the area so that, uh, residents have an opportunity to enjoy that. And these are just going to be some graphical representations of, um, that development. And so our recommendation for tonight is to consider adoption of a resolution that authorizes a joint application between the city of Riverbank and, uh, Central Valley Community Resources to part, uh, apply for and participate in the Home Key Plus program. Uh, I will mention that if the city of Riverbank and CVCR are successful in receiving a grant application, there'll be a formal regulatory agreement that will be developed between the city and CVCR in order to set forth our requirements of the development itself. These developments that are funded through the Department of Housing and Community Development require annual inspections and monitoring by the city of Riverbank. We currently do that at two other locations, the Riverbank Senior Apartments and the Willow Point Apartments that are located off of Morel. We, our housing specialist, uh, does an annual checklist of items that have to be reviewed, which include how property management is addressing concerns of the residents, uh, what the maintenance looks like. Um, they actually look at tenant's income levels to make sure that those are getting properly evaluated. Uh, they also do a inspection of the units themselves to make sure that all of the maintenance standards are being met, um, and any other requirements that the city would place on them. Uh, this funding also requires affordability covenants. And so we would ensure that for a certain period of time, sometimes that turns out to be fifty five years, uh, we would be requiring them to make these affordable for that timeframe. Um, so we do have the project applicants here and, um, Milan Hughes with Thurman Consulting has been assisting with the preparation of their grant and is available to answer any specific questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the council first?
Milan, just, just one quick question. Uh, the project change from the fifty units, uh, some kind of offered studios for maybe like single, single residents, um, has changed to the sixty seven units. So give us an insight as to that decision and only offering the two bedrooms.
Yeah, so in our discussions with our housing provider, which is Rebuilding Green, we've discovered that the studio in one bedroom units actually turned out to be more expensive than the two bedroom units. And with our goal being to serve families, it is obviously best for us to have larger units. And it's just best that we go with the cheapest unit as well.
And then just kind of give us some insight as to discussions with, uh, our community development director Joshua, how that's kind of been going, collaboration, as you guys are building this out, that's pretty important. So if you just kind of share some insights to those discussions.
Yeah, so I've spoken to Joshua a few times, actually. But is Joshua still here?
Okay, I've spoken to him a few times, I meant to introduce myself today, so, uh, we're, I spoke to Maricela and some other people at the city. So we're planning to get a pre-development meeting put on this, uh, schedule pretty soon here, um, probably the next two to three weeks.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Um, I'll add that I'm disappointed to see some of the single units being off of this, um, just because we are dealing with behavioral health, uh, individuals. Um, and children who could potentially be coming out of foster care situations where they don't do well with a cohabitant. So that is a little bit concerning to me, um, and just veterans as a whole, you're dealing with the PTSD situation. So I was actually really excited to see studios and I think I brought it up yesterday that I was really disappointed to see those go. Um, and then my only other question would be the public awareness campaign, what that has looked like, um, here at a local level. Um, just, I haven't personally seen anything and I did call a couple of residents and they haven't heard anything. So I just am curious what that has looked like.
Yeah, so we've been, uh, collecting signatures within the community for a couple of weeks now, a little bit longer than that actually, but, um, kind of, uh, sparked it up in the last couple of weeks, really getting active. Um, of course, we've heard some of the complaints that have come through the city. So we've been kind of trying to, uh, address those proactively and not sit on our heels and wait for that to come, come across our board, right? But, um, yeah, we're definitely engaged in the community. We've been reaching out to the local churches as well as some of the other community organizations. Obviously, CVCR is a part of the Chamber of Commerce, so we've been in communication there and just trying to stay, um, grassroots with it at this point, trying to get everything in order. Um, as you know, that the funds were just allotted to the program, uh, to the project about a month ago. So we've been moving fast here and, um, it's just gonna be a, a longer process, obviously, as everybody knows. Community outreach is not a, a month process, it's not a two month process, it's a ongoing thing. So something that we're definitely, um, arranging for now.
Um, are there any public comments or questions? Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Well, Daniel from Snow White Drive-In, um, since nine, let's see, I'll start off with, uh, well, it is getting rid of the almonds and things like that, which is sad, but, uh, I do notice it's right by the, uh, cost less. So it's right by a grocery store, it's right by a, uh, soccer field and things like that, which is great, it looks great. The, the only thing I'm very much I've been always against is that section eight deal. Uh, every ten years, about three, four, five times actually, uh, since I've been here at ninety three, I've said that, uh, there's no place, if you have a, just a regular, normal manager job or something like that, you know? Um, that you can't live in Riverbank. You have to either buy a house or you have to be section eight. When I got here in ninety three, I was, uh, I had to go to Oakdale, actually. I lived, uh, in Stockton and I was a manager and like that, I bought the Snow White Drive-In. And when I did, all of a sudden, every single apartment, and I went house to house to house, you know? Every apartment places, now, if I'm wrong, then I would gladly let someone to enlighten me. But, you know, the high school, around the high school, the apartments, the other apartments, the other different apartments that you've approved over the many years, all of them are section eight. And some of them might say, no, they're not, they're section six or five or three, or I don't know which, whatever, they come up with another number. But it's, if someone, uh, so I end up going to, uh, Oakdale, nice little four hundred dollars, this is a long time ago. Four hundred dollars, little tiny fireplace, two bedroom, little place to park my car, nice little thing. They said, yeah, I have credit, okay, and everything like that. Well, everybody in Riverbank said, no, you have to make this income. How many children do you have? Are you on welfare? Are you not? Are you this? Or something like that? It's like, really? I just want to, you live closer to my business. So it's taken me thirty something years now, I have a house actually, uh, in Riverbank. But it's taken me a long time to actually get this house in Riverbank. And that's kind of, you know, the thing, I think it's great that there has all the wonderful stuff, the community, uh, little things that they need for, for the kids and stuff like that, I think that's awesome. But you, you gotta find a way to put somewhere, even with that, even mingle in, in with it, where if someone comes in and says, I'm, wanna be a manager of one of these stores that's in Riverbank, maybe, and they make a tad too much money and I can't buy a house right now, that you should be able to allow them to buy a, to rent an apartment. We stayed there six months or whatever it was. And, uh, maybe that's why they're trying to look for people who wants to live in apartment. But as I've always been kind of told, you shouldn't really live live. When I say live, I mean like thirty years in apartment. You should be eventually, uh, getting something, your income is growing or something is growing, that you can buy a house in Riverbank, let's say, and that's awesome. So, uh, uh, but if there was an apartment complex, not talking about one little house off to the side, but if there's an apartment complex in Riverbank that you can have, that you're not bound by the income level and be approved by Modesto government and stuff like that, then please let me know, I would like to know, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we do have a list of people that want to speak on this item, I apologize, uh, Brad Hahn.
So I'm, uh, just let you know, I'm the chairman of the Stanislaus Homeless Alliance, which what's that is, is the, uh, electeds, uh, council member calls on there. And, uh, Luis was one of the first ones on the Stan- Stanislaus Homeo- Homeless Alliance. And what we're, what we're doing is exactly what we're here for tonight is to pro- pro- provide whatever it takes to get cities to, to do what they need to do to get housing for this, uh, very vulnerable population that's in our community. And we all have that, the group that's there. I happened to volunteer for, cause I know Darlene and she wrote me in to helping with this project, so, uh, and we can address the issue of the, that you're talking about with the, I, I get what you're saying, it was just purely, uh, an economic thing, we didn't really think too much about the other, but that's stuff that we'll, we'll kind of haggle out in the process. But the place is, uh, is gonna be well run and it's gonna be, uh, something that, uh, Riverbanks to be proud of, that they're really helping house people that are now unhoused. And the real market isn't the people that you see on the street as much because many of those folks are, are it's serious mental health and drug issues. But it's the people that are couch surfing, the, the mom that has two kids or three kids that are living with two other families. It's trying to get them a place that they can begin to, to start life out and, and get going with it. And, and you're, by doing this, you're helping, uh, a lot of people. And I think that's, I have to keep focusing on, you know, you get to the dollars and cents and two bedroom, one bedroom, and you forget that, we're talking about people here that really need help. And this is a, a really good way, and I'm really proud of Riverbank doing this. You guys are the leaders in the county of, of, of the small cities doing a project, a home key project and a several church projects also that you're doing some stuff on the back that you've heard about, which is really great, thank you.
Elizabeth Rodarte? Good evening, Mayor Hernandez, city council members and members of the community. My name is Elizabeth Rodarte and I am the Assistant Superintendent of Riverbank Unified School District. One of the many programs that I happen to oversee and I proudly oversee and serve is the McKenna Ventle Program. And the McKenna Ventle Program is a program that funds or provides fundings to schools for students who are homeless, doubled up or misplaced at times, right? So what I want to share tonight with you is that in Riverbank, we currently have two thousand nine hundred and forty two students. None of those two thousand nine hundred and forty two students, a hundred and fifty eight students are homeless. That's our reality. And although we get funding, we get funding for shoes, clothing, food, uh, basic essentials. One of the greatest challenges is housing. Typically, we are provided with vouchers, uh, through county support and the maximum amount of days that we can help our families be in a motel is three days. After three days, they're back in their car out in the cold or hot weather. And that's the reality right now. And those numbers are growing. Three weeks ago, the Riverbank Unified School District was honored by the Stanislas County Office of Ed as a demonstration district to the, to the entire community in partnership with Riverbank. They commended our programs, our partnerships, the Sierra House. But one of the things and recurrent themes was housing. We don't have a solution to the housing issue that our families are experiencing. So tonight, on behalf of the district, I stand before you advocating and urging that you closely consider supporting the Home Key Plus program and that we're here to be part of the solution and be your partners. Thank you.
Yeah, Thelma Louise?
Mayor and council members and staff, Thelma Louise. My last name's Gibson, but I love going by Thelma Louise. Anyway, yes, I've worked with the homeless for a little over four years now. And most of your homeless, yes, that's where they want to be, is out there. We've tried to give them housing, we tried to put them into missions. Some have gone to the Sierra House and a lot have left as they've come in. They don't like the rules. I was gonna go on behalf of getting the women off of the streets out here, but I guess there's been a survey taken as well, they don't want to follow the rules either. So those that are out there homeless, that's what they wish, that's where they wish to be. But there's also those women with children, and like she had just said, vouchers are given for them to go to a motel to stay and it's just a few days. And once those days are up, these, these women are back out on the streets where their children, on a sidewalk, living in a little huddled bus place I've found. Some are in old broken-down cars, some, some do have cars that don't run. I'm out and about all the time looking around for homeless people, people living out of cars and everything. I'm to and fro, to and fro, looking all the time. So I'm just here to ask for support of the women and children and there are fathers too out there raising their children by theirself. I know because I have a grandson with three children that the mothers have left him ever since they ran diapers and they're like seven, six and seven now, and one's three. But, so those that are out there, they're struggling and they really need the help. So I'm just here asking, and, and I really appreciate what all of you are doing, but they need housing that they can afford. More and more people are coming out of their houses because they cannot not afford this rent anymore. Our economy has just skyrocketed. So it's either, do I pay my car payment or do I pay my rent? Do I pay my house payment? Do we buy food? Do I put shoes on my children's feet? How are we going to do this? So the low income, I agree with. And I'm also here, I, I really, you know, I really appreciate what all of you are doing. Like I said, I've, I've been out here for a long time working in the community. And I'm also a volunteer with the American Veterans First. I'm a widow of an Army veteran, passed away a couple of years ago. And I, I remain working and steadfast with our veterans. Yes, they do have PST, the disease there, a lot of them do. Sometimes you don't know what's going to trigger that, it can be anything. But most of the time, we've had a place, but it was sold out, the building was sold. So now we're looking for another place to bring our veterans in. My understanding, we have 881 veterans in this town alone. So we have the highest veterans in a town considering throughout the Stanislas County area. And a lot of them, like you said, are living from couch to couch or they're living in homes still with their mothers or with their families, you know, whoever can provide. But everybody is kind of househopping at this time, they don't really have a place to call home. So I'm just here, just, you know, I, I really love what you said for our veterans, that gated areas. This would be great for them because things that trigger them, they may be in their homes and, and trying to be quietly watching program or quietly trying to sleep. They don't want to look out and see someone going through their garbage cans or stealing their little, you know, barbecue thing. It, it's really hard on them, there's too much that can trigger them. And to have a gated area would be the utmost thing for our veterans, absolutely. And so I, I agree with that too for the gated areas, thank you for that. And anyway, that's just all I want to say, that I'm just out here just speaking and giving a voice for our parents who are single and raising children by theirself, it's really hard. And they do need a place to be able to call home, as well as our veterans. And I'll be glad when we find a place, I hope soon, to be able to bring back our veterans in because we're usually open from Monday through Friday. And Fridays, I started a free breakfast for them, so they're really missing that. We bring them in and, and it's so comfortable. I get a lot of calls from our veterans, when are we going to get another place? They love coming in to our place because they can sit down, they can watch a movie, they can watch TV. Sometimes one of them might pull us back, you know, separately and we'll talk and stuff. I've had veterans just walk in and, and pause for a moment because all of a sudden, they may see something that sets this off, it triggers them. And I will politely go over and take their hand and tell them, I will reassure them that it's okay. Me and you, let's go into our museum, come on, I want you to come in there, you know, and we'll talk. I really enjoy our veterans, I really enjoy working for them. But they need, they need housing as well. And I would like to see all of our veterans going into a gated area where it'd be a little bit safer for them and also with the mental health on, on staff there that would, you know, a little place to go to, I think that would be wonderful. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Terry?
I know most of you, I'm speaking as a resident, but also full disclosure, I'm also on the board of CBCR. So I'm serving too. No, I don't want to be loud. Okay, is that better? Yeah, sorry. So I did, as a board member, want to address your concerns about the units being two-bedroom. Just because they're two-bedroom doesn't mean that they have to have a roommate. Obviously, the, the less of a cost, more units. A single per, a single individual who maybe has PTSD or something else or just needs to be in a single place on their own, they're more than welcome to do that, even though it is a two-bedroom apartment. They'll just have more storage or something, I don't know. But, so many of you know, I'm a data junkie. So I went ahead and I have some notes, just to give you the actual, some data points for you to understand where, which I'm sure you know most of this, where and why we need to have this project here in Riverbank. All of my data, well, most of it, is coming from the US Census. Anything that's not coming from the US Census, I will let you know where I got that data, so you too can look it up. I have no problem with that. So this data, it's a picture of the Riverbank community and we are facing a significant economic challenge, particularly within our families and vulnerable populations, like you have already heard. So I'm just going to give you a quick breakdown. The economic hardships within our county, within our community are low-income. Thirty-seven percent of our families earn, earn less than $50,000 annually. And that is a two-parent family. So obviously, if it's a single-parent family, it's significantly less, often less than $30,000 a year. This indicates a widespread strain, financial strain on our families. Childhood poverty, we have the, some of the highest childhood poverty rates in the area, as well as significantly within the state. Currently, right now, we are at 17.5%, which exceeds the California average of 13.8%. Which, which is highlighting an impact on our children. Public assistance, a substantial portion of our families are on public assistance. Of course, our single-parent families are on, are the highest rate at 45%. But we also have 26% of our dual-parent families are also on public assistance. Housing affordability, currently in Riverbank, 24% of the housing is considered affordable. 24% is affordable. That means 75% of our housing is not affordable to any of our citizens. Creating a ma, this is a major obstacle within our families. Homelessness, Stanislas County, including Riverbank, is experiencing significantly, significant homeless crisis. Currently, right now, we have two, over 2,000 individuals that are affected. Twenty-four percent of those, those that are homeless indicate they're homeless because they can't afford to pay their rent or their mortgage. This, this data came from the 2024 Stanis, or 2024 Stanislas County Point of Time Report, which happens annually. So just some demographic and vulnerable, on our demographics, on our vulnerable populations that we, this project will be, will be working with. Young populations, 34% of the, of our population here in Riverbank is under the age of 19. Emphasizing the need for support for children and fa, for children and families. Our aging population, this project doesn't specifically address this, but I do know we do have projects in the works, so I just thought I'd mention this as well. Currently in, in Riverbank, 20% of our population is actually over 55 and is actually also low-income. Highlighting there, our need for more investment in senior services. Veterans, this was already stated, Riverbank actually has a very high population with over, with 4.7% of our entire population being veterans. The state average is for 4.3. Granted, that doesn't sound like much, but it actually is. The state of California actually has one of the highest rates of veterans throughout the United States. This is, this is also highlighting the need for more specific veteran support, which this project does address. Of those living in Riverbank, veterans, 12% are below, live below the federal poverty level, which is substantially less than the California poverty level. The majority of those make less than 38,000 a year. Foster youth, Stanislas County has a considerable number of foster youth. Currently, right now, the, the rate is, the number is estimated for 487 youth in foster care. We actually don't have a number, because those numbers are restricted, on specifically where those foster care, foster youth are. Which this does indicate, we do need more support for foster youth throughout the county and not just Riverbank. So these data show a strong correlation between low-income, affordable housing and homelessness. Children are disproportionately affected by poverty with long, the, with long-term consequences on their future. Single-parent households face particularly severe economic challenges within our community. The high cost of housing is a major driver and, and financial instability and homelessness in our area. So just to summarize really quick, so everyone can go home. Riverbank faces a complex set of socioeconomic challenges that require targeted interventions such as this project to support families, children and other vulnerable populations, including our veterans. Addressing of housing affordability and poverty and homelessness needs to be our priority. We need to do better and we are trying to do better. This housing project is not, is just the start. We obviously need more resources. Daryl has mentioned that there's just not enough housing for even our middle-income families. But this is one place that we can start and that we need to start. And that's all I have for you. Thank you all and have a great evening.
Mayor, that is all I have. Oh, Olivia.
Good evening again, Mayor Hernandez, council members and members of our public. When this came up about the way to go for the council in supporting one of the projects that was up listed last month, and this was one of them. I did share information about my life and why it was important to go this route. When I was younger, I was homeless a few different times. Our houses got sold and we didn't have a place to live. I, at points in my youth, did have to live in a car. I did have an aunt that did take in my younger three siblings at the time, but I was a teenager, so I was too old, she didn't want me there. Being in that position brought me out of school. Wasn't able to attend school. There were times where I was there to watch my youngest sibling, who was a baby, who was not allowed into the house because she was too young. So she was in a different car with my mom and my stepdad. And so I, I, not that I struggled, I'm not going to say that, it just challenged me to do better and to overcome my obstacles with my education at the time, because I was not allowed, well, I was not enrolled in school, so I can do this. And so I can watch my, my sister, because of the situation that we were in and the parents having to work and not having the funds and the money to have daycare, that was never an option. When I first heard of this project, it was, I think about a year ago, it was mentioned here. And that's when the, or whenever it was when the park was actually brought into fruition, they, the, that was, the vote was for a park, not for the households that were going to be built. I'm, my comment was like, oh, there's not that many homeless people in Riverbank. I'm thinking the homeless people in the river who were, you know, choosing to live there. I wasn't thinking about the displaced families in the position that I was in at one point in time, because we don't see it. We do see those people that are out there walking the street and living in the way that, that they are living, for whatever reason. But being a child that was in a situation like that, it does affect you, affects your life, it affects your future, it affects the decisions you make. You feel hopeless. And having a place with this project to come home to your own house, to be able to go to school, to be able to do your homework, to be able to make life decisions at, for a teenager, not putting yourself into adult situation and making decisions that will determine a different destiny. It's very important for this project because it's going to give many of those families and children the option to develop a better future, because they're going to have the options to go to school. They're going to have the options to go to college. They're not going to think, oh, well, that's not my, not my path anymore. They're going to have the option to move forward in their youth and become a doctor or whatever it is they want to be in their life, because they have a steady home where they're going to be able to go to school and get their education and not make choices that will be in the moment of what you think your future is going to be because you are homeless. I do ask that we continue to move on with this project. I hope that, I, I hope that people, and I live in Crossroads and I've heard there are a few people in Crossroads who are against this. It's not in the area that I live. It doesn't matter, there's children, there are families. It doesn't matter if it was next door to me. I do have more than one property here in Riverbank again. And I do have different people that live in different areas in the end. It's the kids, they just need to have a future no matter where they live. And I think that we have a project that's going to ask for us to provide, you know, or the, whether or not we're able to do this, but there is that housing development project that it's almost 3,000 homes that we're trying to have Riverbank or that the government is trying to have us provide in our growth here in Riverbank. government is trying to have us um provide in our growth here in Riverbank. I think that knocking out sixty houses, sixty seven houses, whatever it the moment is that it ends up being because things change, that is going to make a world of difference for those people. And it's just going to allow us to grow in other areas. So without going any further, I would just like to say that I'm supportive of this project. Um, I hope that you see the value in providing displaced families a home. And that we do give to our veterans. I am a veteran daughter who was in listed for twenty one years. And um my stepdad, who was my father, and he did he did have those um issues from Vietnam that arose with him and who that uh the PTSD. He did have that um happen and he was a different person for that. But he was a great man. And if he had a place like this, if he was in that situation that had the counseling and services that are going to be provided on a regular basis. And I'm not sure if they're just we provide it to veterans or everyone. We all can use a little bit of that at some point in time. We all need some kind of help and I think helping out in this situation and providing these homes and keeping the project going is definitely something that's going to show that Riverbank stands above the rest and that we care for our veterans and we care for our children and our displaced families. Thank you.
Deanna?
Mayor, city council, city staff, residents at home in here. Thank you for getting us this far and didn't mean to be deceitful. The last time I stood in front of you and said that we were going to have studios and one bedrooms. Um, but we are pitching every penny here for the project and if some units come in cheaper and we gotta we gotta try to make the budget continue ongoing and we gotta you know, it's just like when you're at the grocery store, of course, the kids like the brand name cereal, but shit, sometimes you gotta have the off brand cereal. Uh, that's kind of like how the two bedrooms and studios and and all that came about. It's not that we're trying to um go back on our word or our original presentation. It's um as we look forward to helping more families in the city of Riverbank who desperately need our help. We're just trying to stay within budget. Um, which is very hard to do with an ever moving budget with tariffs coming in and making prices of building material more expensive and whatnot. Um, I did walk around the new neighborhood right there behind Costco and I was able to collect signatures. I did walk around the neighborhood right across from Murrow and was able to collect signatures. A lot of people weren't home during the hours that I could go. I left my little flyer there that that you seen earlier. I did stand in front of Costco until they asked me to leave. I did stand in front of Save Mart till they asked me to leave. I did stand in front of Target till the sheriff came out. And I did go and stand at Home Depot parking lot for four hours because the staff actually came out and signed my my little um letter saying that they approve of affordable housing. And I was able to meet some really nice contractors there that were here working in the city who would like to help with playground or who would like to help with um being a part of our project. They were um really glad to hear that the city of Riverbank is supporting affordable housing. And um I I did make copies of all of the ones that I personally went and contacted. It was probably about two hundred signatures that I just turned in right now to um Mrs. Hernandez. And um there is support out there for this project. I know sometimes naysayers' voice seems louder than uh the positive voice. But there was a lot of people out there that was really excited to hear that um the families. You know, of course, there's the people down there by the river that are are there and we'll always have people in our history that choose to or or are being out there. But we have a lot of families who really, uh, children, you know, whatever, your mom and your dad, they make their decisions, you know. None of us choose our parents, but thank God we have them, right? So um parents go through what parents go through on a daily, but children are who we're here to look after. Children are who we're here to give a brighter future to. And if we can give brighter future to our children, we'll give a brighter future to our city. Thank you for your time.
Are there any more public comments or questions? Maybe there was a just a quick question in passing about who will receive the behavioral services and
Yeah, so everybody that is a resident of our community will be able to receive the services, all the services regardless of your uh section that you follow.
So I will bring it back to council if there's any more questions, otherwise a motion uh to approve the resolution or something else.
I just have a comment really fast. Um, so you guys do an incredible job of articulating your message and your goals and what you want to do with the project. I just challenge you to find a way to reach a bigger audience sooner before this project, if it is voted to move on. Um, then I or us co-app co applicants, but um I just challenge you to find a way to hit a bigger audience sooner. So we don't have more people coming in because the naysayers are very loud. Um, and you guys do an incredible job of it here, but I want to see it out there and I want to hear about it out there. So I challenge you guys to do that.
I think that's that sounds like a fair request, so I'll go ahead and make it a motion to approve item eleven point three.
Second.
The roll call, please.
Council member Olivia?
Yes.
Council council member Pimentel?
Yes.
Council member Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fossey?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Hey, thank you, everybody, for sharing. Uh, item eleven point four, City Hall side assessment.
Mayor and council, this item is being brought to you as a follow up to the approval of a contract to do an assessment of properties here in our downtown for the potential location of City Hall. So I do want to share a little bit of history for members of the public um and council members who are new to to the dais. In June twenty eighteen, City Council established a strategic plan objective to conduct a spatial analysis of all city facilities. Back in twenty eighteen, it was very evident to our city council at that point in time that we were pretty sure on space here in the city to be able to house our employee. Um, staff had outgrown the current facilities, making it difficult to add staff that's necessary to serve our residents. So in January of twenty nineteen, City Council approved a contract with Indigo Hammond and Playa Architects for a spatial needs analysis. They visited with each of the departments to develop short and long term staffing requirements to determine spatial needs. In February of twenty twenty, that analysis was completed and presented to the city council. So I'm just going to give a little quick overview of some of the observations that were noted as part of that needs analysis. It's City Hall North, which is the building that we're here now. Our council chambers are too small. So you noticed today we had some very interesting topics on our agenda which drew a larger than normal crowd. We had individuals standing in the back. Um, although we did have some empty seats, had there been more individuals here to fill those seats, we probably had would have had more folks standing up. Um, the restrooms are in an awkward location for a public space as as this is. Um, they're not as easy accessible to either our residents who are visiting us for council meetings or to our council members who may need to use that during um council meeting times. And for those of us who happen to be in suite A, which is administration, we've got some frequent trips to recreation that we make, so. Um, there is insufficient space to house future needs in administration and in parks and recreation. Now, Parks and Recreation was able to move some staff um to our corporation yard. They have now taken over the very old Public Works Administration building since Public Works Administration was able to move into a new building. The goal had been to demolish that um modular building that they have out there so that it will allow for our bigger equipment like our Vactor truck to not have to make a three point turn to be able to get into our C and G maintenance facility to get serviced. But because of our lack of space here in downtown, um we did go ahead and decide to move the Parks and Recreation or the park staff themselves down back down to um the corporation yard. So it did allow for a little bit of extra space in recreation, um which we would probably be able to add one, maybe two staff members to that department when needed. But administration, many of you visit me uh on a biweekly basis, so you do see how very limited space we have. A City Hall South, which is the building across the street, is a maze to get through. And there's a lot of employees packed into one small little building, so it is severely overcrowded. Uh, in appropriate separation of counter and staff work, so the counter, uh, we were able to add some of the barriers, but there's a very limited counter space for employees to have a good um conversation with our residents, especially in our building and planning department and development services, where they often bring in these huge plans and they can't get them or review them at the counter because there's just no space to do that. And at that location, there is no public restrooms. So residents that might need to use the facilities have to walk from uh City Hall South over here to City Hall North. So the at that point in time, um, this is remember the February twenty twenty um spatial analysis gave us some interim solutions uh to move Parks and Recreation to a leased space to reorganize space, which would then free up that portion or suite C of our building. Um, they then recommended that we reorganize space to allow us to expand our city council council chambers and allow administration to expand and then improve the access to the expanded restrooms. Uh, unfortunately, in twenty twenty, there was not a lot of space available to lease. And we also did not want to have add yet another building um to our repertoire here in downtown where we were having residents having to walk from building to building to building in order to get one transaction done. Currently, I will share, uh, if you have a transaction you need to do at the sheriff's department, they refer them over for payments to our finance department. They will walk into recreation. They get told they need to go next door to City Hall South. They will then walk over to administration where we once again tell them they need to walk across the street to City Hall South. So it is an inconvenience to our residents who are trying to make transactions here. Now, at City Hall South, there was a recommendation to move the finance department to a leased space, which would be now a fourth building that we would add by moving Parks and Rec to another building and finance to another building, which would allow planning, building and development services to reorganize themselves within City Hall South um for their additional spatial needs. Those were the recommendations back in twenty twenty. They probably still hold true now because we are still at a lack of space and we have added a lot of employees within both buildings even now. So this is five years later. Um, apologize that this um is very small, but basically this is the graphical representation of the spatial needs and the ultimate um needs that we have long term. Mind you, once again, this was five years ago. So at that point in time, they recommended a minimum building area of twenty three thousand square feet. We have added staff both in recreation, we have added staff in finance, we have added new staff in building and planning. And in addition, building and planning built extra space. We took over the conference room at the police services so that code enforcement can leave City Hall South and free up some room there. And so they're now located inside police services. Um, and then we've added more staff, of course, to administration itself. Each of the departments continue to have a need to add additional staff as our city continues to grow. I can honestly say for my department that I am in need of three positions, yet I have nowhere to be able to put those those individuals. Development services who are inspectors who look at huge plans have the tiniest cubicles known to mankind in order to to review those, and they need to add at least three positions within the next couple of years. So twenty three thousand, five years ago, our recommendation now is as we continue to grow, we're going to need to continue to add more staff. So let's look at adding the maximum amount of square footage possible within the confines of the downtown specific plan, which is what governs our ability to build here in the downtown core area.
And Marisol, just for just for clarification, so some of those those positions that we are unable to fill, we have to then contract out, which costs the city even more. And so so we've had this problem since since this analysis has been happening. And we have had to contract even more work, uh, costing the city even more. So just just FYI.
So what did we do moving forward? In March twenty twenty, after the city council received that initial report, um, the COVID nineteen pandemic began. And so, of course, that meant working from home. So we did place um this project on hold because at that point in time, our focus was the health and safety of our employees as well as the health and safety of our residents. So we found ways to be able to do remote work. A lot of us ended up being able to take laptops home so that we could remote in um to avoid having a lot of contact with other employees, especially at the height of the pandemic. In August of twenty one, um, the city council placed a strategic plan update to that initial discussion about the spatial needs analysis to now research the feasibility of a new city hall um to be able to accommodate the needs that we had in now and in the future. So we did begin to explore vacant buildings. And so there was a at that point in time, there was a vacant building right next door to City Hall South. There's now like a little holistic um uh business that's there. Um, so thirty two thirty four Santa Fe. We were hoping to be able to relocate building and planning and development services there since they work so closely together. The building was originally included in a banker bankruptcy proceeding um from the owner who was going bankrupt. But ultimately, the judge did pull that out and at the end of the day, the property owner did not want to sell that. Um, eventually, they rented that out and and sold um to to the current owners. Sixty four thirty six Oakdale Road was the second option that we begin uh began to explore. It was the former Telecontact Resources Services location. Uh, their employees had moved to fully remote work during the pandemic, so we were looking to lease that space. Uh, it had approximately forty two thousand square feet of space, still has. Um, but at that point in time, the council elected not to move forward as they wanted to keep City Hall in downtown.
Can I make a can I make a quick comment? Um, and so the breakdown of the vote was a three two vote. So if this new council sees an opportunity that makes sense outside the downtown core, that is still an option.
So in June twenty twenty four, council approved a contract with Architectural Plus Inc. to perform number one, a site assessment, which is I what I'm presenting today. It's an evaluation of four sites located in downtown um for expand for a possible city hall expansion project. Uh, three sites are currently owned by the city and one site is on private property. Uh, the assessment included field visits to confirm the existing conditions and to determine the viability for expansion or building demolition if needed. After today, based on the direction that staff uh council provides to me, uh, we will then move forward with conceptual design. And what conceptual design will allow us to do is to uh create estimates for the possible cost of a city hall. I want to be clear, I am not looking for a third building. I am looking for one building that will house every single department um to allow for more synergy between um all of the employees and all of the departments. Um, it will allow us to have one space for our residents to visit and one larger location for the city council to be and one larger location for the City Council to be able to hold their City Council meetings as well. And I know in the past, there's been a desire for Council to have their own meeting spaces. In the event you have a resident who would like to meet with you, and sometimes when you've asked to be able to use some of our spaces, our Council chambers have been busy or across the street is full of plans that staff is evaluating. We may not always have a location for you to do that. Of course, we would incorporate the ability for, for you to have some space available for yourselves as well. So the site assessment, as I mentioned, evaluated four sites. First, the Del Rio site, which is located on the southeast corner of Highway 108 and Third Street. That is not city-owned. So everything I share with you today with regards to the feasibility will all be caveated with the fact that if we were interested in moving forward, we would need an interested property owner as well to be able to sell that to us. City Hall North, which is the building that we're in now. We also evaluated City Hall South, which is the building right across the street to us. And then the city owns another piece of property here in downtown, which is 3142 Sierra Street. It is on Sierra and Second Street. And it's right next door to our beautiful water tank that you usually see off of Patterson Road. Now, I will state that of the four locations, 3142 is not in what we consider our Downtown Core. And I think based off of the feedback that I received from Council back in February of last year, the goal was to stay in Downtown Core. Number one, to be able to have residents come and visit us and then be able to visit some of the local downtown businesses that are here near us. So here's the evaluation criteria that was used to evaluate each of these four sites. Buildable area, minimum number of stories needed to achieve the required square footage that we wanted, the number of parking spaces that can remain or be created on-site, walking distance to the nearest Stan RTA bus stop, which is at the intersection of Third Street and Stanislaus, a distance to the existing city-owned parking lot that's down here on Third Street, need for demolition or expansion, need for temporary relocation during construction, need for land purchase, and advancement of the revitalization strategies outlined in the Riverbank Downtown Specific Plan. As I mentioned, anything we do within downtown is required to comply with that Downtown Specific Plan. And that includes any city or governmental offices that are located here. So the first site that was evaluated was 3300 Atchison Street, the location of the former Del Rio Theater. That is currently a vacant lot after the demolition of the theater itself. It's got 13,500 square feet of buildable space. So in order to reach that 40,000 square foot desired amount, we would only need to be three stories high. It's a gateway into our Downtown Core. It's located right off of the highway. It's distance to the nearest bus stop, which we know not all of our residents have access to vehicles and use our public Stan RTA transportation system. It is a five-minute walk. Distance to our city-owned parking lot, which is located across the street, is just a one-minute walk. But it does have its own onsite parking as well. It has, would not require any demolition or expansion because, of course, that demolition has already taken place. We would not need to temporarily relocate any employees since there is no employees located there. Would we need to purchase the land? Yes. So we would need an interested property owner to sell. And at this point in time, the property owner has been proactively working with investors in order to make his potential project come to fruition. He is interested in building a multi-use project that would have commercial on the bottom floor and residential above. And does this fit our revitalization strategy based on our Downtown Specific Plan? It does, since it is currently a vacant lot and we would be able to use it to its full potential. The next site is City Hall North, which is the building we're in now. It does have 8125 square feet of buildable space. We would need at least five stories in order to reach that 40,000 square foot minimum requirement. That's not allowed by our Downtown Specific Plan. So in order to do that, City Council would have to create an, or consider an exception to the Downtown Specific Plan in order to allow us to build five stories. Zero parking on-site. The parking lot that we had back here, of course, has been gated in for the safety of our Riverbank Police Services. So there is no parking on-site. Everything is street parking. That's where our residents park in front of our building. And then all of the city employees park down the side of the building on Santa Fe Street. It's only a two-minute walk from our bus stop and is only a three-minute walk from the city-owned parking lot that's down the street. It, of course, would require demolition in order to expand. This building will not hold additional stories on top unless we demo the entire thing. It would require temporary employee relocation because both Housing, Parks and Recreation, and Administration are all housed in this building. And we would also need to have another location for our City Council meetings, which usually defaults to our community center, which then limits what Parks and Rec can do within the community center on the first, second, and third Tuesday because Planning Commission would also require a space for them to hold meetings. Would we need to purchase land? No. So that's definitely a cost we would save. And it does not enhance our revitalization strategy that's within our Downtown Specific Plan. We're already here. We're not doing anything else to enhance it, other than adding more stories to our site to be able to house everybody. Now, City Hall South, across the street, has slightly more building area, 9300. That one would only require four stories to reach that 40,000 square foot maximum. Parking spaces on-site, once again, we have a couple, but they are used by city staff. But we would want to use that additional parking space that's there in order to add that expand, in order to expand our buildable space in order to be able to reach that 9375. So there's currently four parking stalls on the side of the building. So we would pretty much take up that space there in order to, to enhance the buildable area. Distance to bus stop, once again, two minutes. It's about, you know, catty corner to where our current bus stop is. It's about a four-minute walk from our city-owned parking lot. It will require, once again, demolition and expansion. We would have to relocate all of the employees within Development Services, Finance, Building and Planning in order to house all of those individuals. And it also houses all of our servers and IT systems. So we would have to find another location to be able to relocate that to because it would be a total gutting of the place, possibly demolition to avoid additional costs. As we know, once we start to tear into walls, we don't know what we're going to find. It doesn't require us to purchase land, so that would definitely be a savings there. And once again, it does not move our revitalization strategy forward. We're already there. We're already providing governmental services there. So it does not do anything else to enhance our strategy. And the last site that we evaluated is 3142 Sierra Street. As I mentioned, that is on the corner of Second and Sierra, right next door to our water tank. That one has definitely more building area. It's got 10,396 square feet. We would still require at least four stories in order to be able to accommodate the minimum 40,000 square feet that we would like. It has no parking space on-site. Currently, it's being used for our compost giveaway. And our Streets Department uses that for some storage of, of some items that we have. Distance to the bus stop, now that's going to be a four-minute walk, since our bus stop is located on Third Street. It's seven minutes from our city-owned parking lot. It is surrounded by residential in that area. It would require no demolition or expansion since it's currently a vacant lot. Temporary employee relocation would not be needed. We would not need to purchase any land. And the revitalization strategy still does not get enhanced since that's mostly focused on our Downtown Core and this property is not located in our Downtown Core. So with that, I am requesting from Council direction on two preferred sites that will allow city staff to move forward with a conceptual design and be able to obtain cost estimates that we would then bring back to Council for consideration. And so I'm just going to forward it to this slide, which just has a quick recap of all of the information I just shared. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any Council comments or questions right now?
What's the maximum stories that we can build?
Four.
Okay, because I understood it to be three.
It's four.
Okay.
Okay, we'll go to a public comment. You have a comment?
Thank you. I was thinking of looking at that outside. So I'm Joe Daniels, Snow White Drive-In, and I've, have looked at the, the, the subjects on that for actually quite a while and, and different other things, not just for the city. But the, right beside the building of, of number two, I believe it is. Go to number two, if you would, if you can. Is right beside it is the Historical Society's old chamber, office, library, whatever it is. My saying is that, of course, they're, they're trying to get grants, they're trying to get this, all kinds of different things. They're trying to get different things to get that. As far as I know, just the city owns it. Because I don't, I don't know how much the historical has money on. But anyway, if you built all the way to the fence, because as far as I know, you have all the way to the fence where they, they want to build in the future, they want it sometime in the future, the fire engine, the old, old, old famous fire engine right there, and it's supposed to be the future site. I don't think it's a future site for, in the near, quick future. But if they did that building, if they need to historical that building, then Ugas, if everyone knows where Ugas is, it's on the corner of where Snow White, where Riverbank is, that it's been nothing for seven years or many years. I don't know how many years it's been nothing. I think if Snow White Drive-In was closed for seven years and did nothing, you should call it blight. If there was nobody, nobody doing anything with Snow White or anything like that, I own the property. Okay? You should be able to come in and say, we're going to take your property, or what are you going to do with your property, at least? Well, Ugas and a lot of different places on Atchison Street is nothing. Same thing across the street from me is the, but that won't matter, anyway. But the Ugas area is absolutely nothing. Right now, it's actually for the homeless to get down in there. That's really what it's designed for, right? But if they were to, I would think the Chamber, Historical Society, Visiting Center, or whatever wants that nice area that's right in the middle, right in the thing of the starting of Riverbank. Okay? Can't put a gas station there. They've already had problems with that. But to put a Visiting Center, Historical Society, Chamber of Commerce, the fire engine that they want to put here, okay? Then they could do is put that fire engine on, what is that street? Not Eighth, Seven, Six, Sixth Street, isn't it? Sixth Street, everyone knows what I'm talking about, right? As far as I know, like Ugas, when I say Ugas. So I think it's, even down below, the other people have been taking that. I would love to have that as a little historical something, fire engine. Welcome to Riverbank. Hey, you're in Riverbank now. Then there's a little path on Riverside. They take you around toward the river, and that's really what I thought the, the river walk was. And then I found out it's just a bunch of homes. But geez. But I live on Riverside even, okay, a little bit further down. And it's nice to see walkers and bicyclers and stuff like that, you know, very, to be going down in the rivers right there. And I can't believe I got a good deal on it. The, but it needs, that's why I'm very much in, in favor of number two. Because if that would give, you said at one time you have five stories. So you're just going to eliminate it. No. How much would it be to take away that? And if the Historical Society, which I don't know how much money they have, you know, not that much. They've, if they have to take that building, move it to Ugas. Is the Ugas, I don't know how many different people have bought it lately because the, the Setliff is the one that used to own it, Setliff Brothers. And then they sold it to someone who, I don't know what, can they do anything with it, that property? They need to find out as, the city needs to find out is, what are you planning on doing with that Ugas property or even the 76 station, stuff like that? What is your plan? What is your five-year, 10-year, 20-year? Are you going to do nothing for 50 years? I mean, really, I mean, some people do that. They just sit on the property. You know, you have a place to sit in downtown area that's like that, that just sit on the property. Well, I really, really think you should be able to say blight. You know?
So if I can interrupt you, I think I have a similar question, just so we stay on track. It's about the adjacent property to here to the Historical. Okay. We'll, we'll get an answer for you because I think I have the same question.
Yeah, it sounds like you're ready to make a vote that, you can't vote on two because you only, you can't do five stories because you don't have enough land. But you do, you have grass. Is that tree that historical? I don't know if that tree is that historical, the one that's in front of it. You have a library. Well, if it's that, that historical, don't tear it down, then move it to another spot. Okay?
Thank you.
So that's why.
Was there a conversation with the Historical Society? I think someone had mentioned something.
No. So the museum is a historical building. So we are, our hands are tied as to what we can do with that building. So moving it to another location, I don't know if that will meet the full intent of the historical designation because that is the original location of the Carnegie Library. So moving it away from that particular spot sort of loses that history part of it.
I have heard people come to me and saying that we should make that into like a historical building and an entry to Riverbank thing. Several people, because it's like what you see when you first come in.
Yes.
I know, maybe that's an option.
So now, the biggest subject is, let's go into Riverbank, let's go toward, well, what used to be Del Rio, going towards Snow White. And what we're going to see is old Ugas, which is, does not exist. We're going to see a 76 station that does not exist. We see a Dr. Shaw's office, which is cost for me, which does not exist. Okay? And that Dr. Shaw's, there's been people that wanted to make that into a preschool. But they don't want to sell. Well, wait a minute. Like I said before, if my drive-in is that zero customers for seven years, you should call blight on me. Okay? If I don't have a plan, like I have a permit to build a five-story hotel there, great. But I don't.
Thank you. We're going to move forward onto other public comments. Thank you. I love you.
Good evening, Mayor Hernandez, council members, the community is here tonight. I was here the night that we first had talked about needing more room and expansion for our city offices. And definitely keeping it downtown was one of the things that I suggested. If you guys leave downtown, you're going to hurt these businesses that are down here. This is the reason why people come, is to see you guys. So location-wise, I think we really should stay downtown. Also, I did bring up the fact that, you know, I'm very grateful for where we are at at our meetings, the industrial complex here in Riverbank for Chamber of Commerce. But we do need to have a downtown presence so we can be more relevant in the community. I did bring that up that night as well. So whether or not we are part of where you are at, we can be a part of where you move to. We can, if, say you moved out of this building and you wanted to have different things like Chamber of Commerce, wherever Daryl suggested, you know, in those places for these buildings here. We, that would be an option unless you're trying to sell them to make money to pay for wherever you have to go to. I get that, but we would like to have a presence downtown with you guys. Also, my suggestions would be a couple of things. I love that we're in this location right here, but five stories seems rather high. I think that you should take back that Del Rio land and do something amazing with it. You have a great parking lot right there, you know, so do what you have to to get that. It's a great gateway and it's across the street from my office, so a little bit selfish there. I love seeing you guys. I can walk across the street to come here instead of having to drive. And then also, there is, there are office buildings that are across the street that are available for sale that's not on these options. In a search that I was looking for the other day, they're, they are something you would have to revitalize, fix, tear down, build up as well. But that's something that needs attention too, and maybe the business is there, whether they want to stay there or not, whether they want to move into one of these buildings, that may be an option as well. So I can, yeah, so that's kind of what's going on right there, either here, brand new Del Rio, which is across the street from me, thank you. And maybe that is a fifth option. There's other offices that are across the street that are for sale right now. So please stay here, don't leave, include Chamber of Commerce, and let me know if you need anything.
Any other public comments or questions?
We have one on Zoom, Mayor.
Let's take this. Thelma, do you want to come up and say your comment?
But I'm sorry, Thelma Louise here again. I'm, I would not agree into purchasing the Ugas property. It's too close to the river. And like I said, I was saying, I've been out here for four years. It's almost been five years, I got doing the math. But basically, behind set lifts there is, is down the river is where all the homeless are at. And there's a lot of things and activities that go on. And they have also broken in the back wall of the Ugas to have shelter in there. So when it comes to said and done, at the end of the day, when you leave that place, if you had purchased it, I can guarantee you what, there are going to be some break-ins. I, I know, I know the people very well and I know, you know, little activities that they do. Like I said, I've, I've been out there for many years with them. And that's one of the great places that they love hanging out at. But I agree with this young lady here, with Del Rio would be a great place for to stay right here because we enjoy coming downtown here to visit you all and know that you're here during time of all the events that are happening. This is a great location. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You take the online comment.
Number ending in three, one, zero, eight, can you please unmute? Can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Please go ahead.
Yeah, I'm a resident of downtown. I've been here, my family's been here for generations. I think you were talking about the museum next door to City Hall North. That's just historical, that's a Getty building. So that's, has more problems than just being historical because it was protected when they built it. Because they used the funding that they used to build it. I think the best place for that is where Del Rio was. Maybe you need to talk some more, maybe you do a little compromising on everything that you need. Maybe you don't have to have every single thing that you need right now. Maybe you can build it, maybe if you can't get it all, maybe you could remodel City Hall North and use it again without destroying a history. The Downtown Pacific Plan created a downtown historical district down there. And there are mitigations and other things in that, within that plan regarding the historical buildings. They did a study at the time. They're going to do the general plan update, and they updated that study since then, if we could find it. But I think you have to be careful, the historical part of this too. But maybe you could make a little more effort on the theater building there, Del Rio there, because that would be the best place to put it. And maybe with a little talking and compromising stuff, you might get something that way. Thank you.
Mayor, that is all on Zoom.
Okay, so I will bring it back to the council and, yeah, just to reiterate for that historical context. The conversation and something I was very interested in is keeping that, this investment in downtown. You had mentioned already, it's a predominantly low income, closer to this area, Latino and more accessible for folks who lack transportation. Though it doesn't necessarily revitalize those three options, revitalize the downtown. I think if we take it away, we'd be, what's the opposite of that? Devitalizing from our downtown, I'm making up words. But I just think it's important to keep the investment here, especially as, you know, I believe, I'll speak for myself, we're very interested in continuing to expand with our small businesses that are here and support economically. So though, you know, I think there are going to be some concessions that we make with, with some of these rankings. I, I do think it's important we keep it down here. So I mean, I'll just quickly say, I know you mentioned Del Rio is kind of looking at investors and keeping their options open, but I would love to have a conversation with them about that site, especially since we developed out that parking lot. And then also City Hall North to, to consider looking at the feasibility of that. But I would love to hear what the other council members think.
I think we're on the same page. I want to see Del Rio site and then City Hall North as well.
I agree.
Well, when I hear you say Del Rio doesn't want to sell because they want to do commercial, I think back to how long it took him to do anything with Del Rio before he demolished. So I have a concern that his ability to do that may be five, ten years down the road. And so if we talk with him, he'd be more willing to sell, knowing that he would get the money sooner. Do you know, you know what I'm saying? Because he's not. But I agree, Del Rio site and I would say the Sierra, but it's kind of far. But using City Hall North is a challenge. But you don't really have any other choices, so I'm, I'm going to agree, Del Rio and North.
I'm just struggling with option two, so I know Steph is asking for two. Del Rio is, is a clear number one, in my opinion. We've already made the investments there. As Daryl mentioned, all of one oh eight. I know our community development director is working on the blight program. He's getting caught up with a bunch of other projects and the shortage of staff. And so he's trying to get caught up with, with all of that. So for me, option one makes the most sense. So let's have those discussions with the, with the developer, with the property owner and see if we can get this property, even though we did own it at one point, and see if we can get it back for, close to what we paid for, right? And so, yeah, and then option two, if you're forcing my hand, if I have to go one way or the other. I, I'm going to just go with south, only because of the impact to the historical society, the stories, the amendments that would go into that. I don't see a clear number two though, so I would say let's put our focus on one.
Do you just need direction?
Yes, at this point in time, I do just need direction. We will then come back to the city council with some additional information regarding the preferred site, since that will require obviously more conversation. I would hate to move forward with a conceptual design, knowing that there's not a possibility for us to acquire that.
Okay, comments and reports, so city manager.
Just one quick comment for today from our business license department, which reminds businesses that their 2025 license payment was due in January. Only just a little bit late. So late fees have been applied of twenty-five percent. And a final ten-day notice is going out to everybody at the end of this week on February twenty-seventh. So if you're a business that had not paid for your license, please do so to avoid a citation or license termination. Payment must be received by March thirteenth in order to avoid that. That is all from Steph.
Thanks, Mayor. Just one, I am planning, along with Maricela and staff, what we're calling an open house with me, Cindy Fossey. But I'm planning at the Riverbank Historical Society, or Riverbank, see, you have me. Riverbank Industrial Complex, so that the citizens come out and can talk to me, but they can also see what a great opportunity we have out there for the citizens, for employment, for everything. It's just amazing out there. So that's going to be March eighteenth, and you'll be seeing things more often, once we get the flyer done. Thank you.
Councilman Vudina?
Thank you, Rachel. So I'll make it quick. I had the opportunity to, to do a ride-along with our Consolidated Fire Protection Station Twenty-Six. And they put me to work. They had me putting on gear, carrying hoses, sliding down a pole, so kudos to them. Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Robert, and thank you, Ryan, for showing me around your, your quarters there. Secondly, the reps for Verizon Wireless have reached out to me. They want to have further discussions with me, share more information. So this is an open invitation for one other council member. We'll do first come, first served. I know how exciting policy meetings on Zoom is, but it's going to be on March fourth at ten a.m. via Zoom. And obviously I'll be sharing my concerns and the pushback that I was giving, so that's all I got. Thank you.
A member call? Oh, this way, sorry. No rhyme or reason. Go ahead, this.
I just wanted to thank Red Robin for partnering with Love Riverbank and Sister City. The community really came together and we were able to have a good turnout. So I just want to give a shout out to Red Robin.
So unfortunately mine's kind of long, but roll with me. Stanislaus Homeless Alliance, I did attend that committee meeting last week. It was a heavy presentation day of our county shelter services. So for those of you who do not know, we have the Sierra House here in Riverbank. And their sister location is in Patterson for women and children specifically. There's also Family Promise, which is a vacant church offering transitional housing to families. It's a great way to utilize vacant churches. So if you know of a vacant church, I encourage you to reach out to the Stanislaus Homeless Alliance and see how that space can be utilized as such. Haven was there, which has had a strong community presence. We Care Interlock, which is a fairly new program. But for me, Center for Human Services really stood out to me with the Youth Navigation Center. They provide valuable resources to thirteen-to-twenty-four-year-olds in crisis experiencing housing instability or homelessness. But at the end of the presentations, the overall concern with these programs helping to mitigate housing insecurity was funding. So overall, obviously, that's a huge concern. And as the federal programs and state programs become less available or more people applying for the same things, just getting creative on how we're going to fund these. I was at the Stan Cog workshop with Mayor Hernandez. She mentioned it earlier, but the vehicle mile traveled is not really a sufficient way for us to calculate gas for, in lieu of gas tax here in the valley with all of the windshield time. I come from a sales background, so I can attest to that. I drove a hundred eighty-four thousand miles in three years selling pet supply. So imagine where your produce and your cost of goods. It's really going to drive those costs up, so we have to get creative in California on how we're going to alleviate that gas tax hit. And then also went over some eminent domain and right-of-way trainings and information. And then the Riverbank Chambers Power of Social Media with Jane Media, I attended that. And after I left, I was on Amazon buying selfie sticks and selfie lights, so stay tuned for that. And then I did a ride-along with the Riverbank Police Services on Friday with Deputy Navarro. I did not see as much action as you. However, I know I talked his ear off. But the overall consensus that I was able to walk away with is that our police services are well-respected in our community. They, a lot of the deputies know our citizens by name. And that's actually, it kind of gives you that small-town feel that everybody talks about, so I really appreciated that. And how much of a selfless role these deputies take on to protect our community. So I want to commend them on that. Thank you, Sergeant Hickman, for setting that up. And then Stanislaus Latino Chamber, they hosted a Meet the Elected Officials Dinner last Thursday at Papa Poloni. There, we had a huge Riverbank presence, which was awesome to see. And then I think the cohesive message was thanking Stanislaus Latino Chamber for their community support and small business advocacy. And then lastly, Cooper Lane, right here downtown, thirty-three thirty-one Santa Fe Street. They have a ribbon cutting for their store. And if you haven't been in there, I encourage you to go out and meet Shannon. She's actually from our community. The ribbon cutting's at two p.m., but she's literally meticulously placed everything in that store. It's absolutely beautiful. So I encourage you to go there on Thursday at two p.m.
Thank you. Let's see here. So I was able to attend for the first time C B C R's crab feed, and it was amazing. Thank you so much for hosting us here in the community center. I mentioned before, I attended the S T R G B A, which is a long acronym for our Groundwater Basin Association. And there are some potential impacts that could affect our rate pairs long-term. So I'm definitely learning more about that to bring back information to you all. Let me see, I'm going to skim over Stan Cog. We've discussed it a couple times. And I attended or I met with Volt Institute and Opportunity Stanislaus today and their executive directors to reiterate the commitment from the city, but also to let them know that we're looking for more support here and more hands-on approaches. So I would encourage all of you to visit them to learn more about their services. And I will leave it at that. So if there are no further comments, there's no closed session. And I am going to adjourn this meeting. The next regular city council meeting will be on Tuesday, March eleventh.